Ready?
All right.
Start with-
We're gonna call the budget work session for town and area and so fiscal year 2020 budget with the staff to order. And we can pick up where we left off unless you have something.
No, no, I was just gonna start with the page number.
All right, let's go.
Page number 57.
Page number 20 for the public.
So, this is our parks administration budget. And it's for this year, other than salaries, I think across the board, there isn't any major changes that we have at least asked for. And you can see again, it's just contractual salaries and healthcare benefits and benefits on contractual obligations have changed. But other than that, we haven't requested any other increases in admin, parks admin. And the parks admin is Michelle, myself, Jerry, Tom, and then Daisy is full-time without benefits in our office. So you have five, five of five people, yes. And we will have a, we'll have an assistant co-ordinator that assists Daisy for the 192 basis.
Any questions on the operating budget for Park and Rec?
That's for admin.
I'm sorry.
That's admin.
Yeah, go ahead.
So on page 59 would be the maintenance, parks recreation maintenance. So that would be parks maintenance. And so you're gonna see a little bit different budget for parks maintenance and programming this year because we're gonna, we're gonna be adding this year. And I don't wanna jump ahead, but we talked about last year, the, actually we talked two years ago about our need to identify the account line items for the community center, senior center. And we talked about this here, actually two years ago, to start drawing out and identifying those line items. So we haven't increased our budget. What we're doing is actually some of the account line items, like in wages and operating supplies and solid waste and different accounts. We've actually reduced, we'll see them added in 1840, which is a new account for the community slash two. Okay? So, so in this case, you'll see parks, parks maintenance, we just increased again for the, we have, we have five parks maintenance full-time staff. And we typically had three seasonal employees that work between this time of April until September to help with landscape, traction, restroom activities that take place during the summer season.
I gotta step off. I'll be right back.
So again, other than, other than wages, we can go through every line item or you can certainly ask me. I think, I think other than maybe grounds maintenance, which we saw some increases in some of supplies, we haven't asked for anything other than just increases where we've seen increases in chemicals and lawn care, fertilization, anything like that, but nothing, nothing major in increases in that, in that budget at all.
We're seeing time and again, the RFQs that go out for fertilizer, each year they're increasing by between 1,000 to 2,000 depending on what the prices are. So that's an increase mainly.
But we take, we try to take advantage of the state master price agreement, so we'll take a look at that or we'll go through, we'll go through an RFQ and obviously take the lowest, you know, most kids on, we try to take advantage of the state master price agreement also. But again, parks maintenance is all of the supplies and what you see in the ball fields, little league fields, soccer fields, restrooms, playgrounds, even all of, you know, throughout town. So you know, we also take care of the other departments, we cut the grass around the departments throughout town too.
The winter stuff too.
Plus the-
Ice melt in the winter, snow shovels, yeah.
I don't know how much detail you have. I focus on basically everything. So again, on page, starting on page 99, we have parks recreation programming. And that's all the programming that we do in, do in town, that would be under Tom Cusco in our office. And, and again, you'll see, this is where you'll see the reduction in salary where we took Karen Flint's salary and moved it over to the community center. And, but you'll, you'll see, and also in temporary wages, you'll see rates reduce a little bit because we're taking staff from, seasonal staff from that, take the line item and also bringing in the senior center. So again, there's, there's not a reduction, it's just moving salaries from one, one account to another account. And there may be a little bit increase because of contractual with union employees, but other than that, there isn't any big increase.
Do you have a question?
Sure, go ahead.
So the community center account, that's a new-
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get to that, yeah.
But that's a newly created account?
Well, will be for July 1st, yes.
And what was the reason to change it then?
Well, we, we, we actually, as I said, we identified that about a year and a half, two years ago. All the accounts were mixed in, they were mixed in with parks maintenance and parks programming. And so every time it came up is, how, you know, how, how much does it cost to run the community center? We, we had a very difficult time because we were, all the supplies, the paper goods, the operating supplies, the heating, the heating oil, everything was mixed in with the parks maintenance budget. And it took us endless hours to try to draw that out because it was, it was not, had its own budget. So we worked with Laura last year, but we never really got it done, so we wanted to propose to end it this year.
Okay, and, okay, when we get to that section, I have a few other questions.
So, again, some of the big, the bigger items here are for our camp field trips, tennis, basketball, play camp festivals, concerts, those are our concerts that we host on Friday nights. You know, that number is, is not high because we also get, as you all know, we also get a lot of spot, we get sponsorships to host our concerts. So this number helps to be able to, to work, to work with the sponsors to be able to produce those concerts together on Friday night. Fireworks is our festival light fireworks that we, we host every December. And again, if you have any questions on the program, you know what we do and we're very proud, I think we do quite a lot during the summer. In fact, I have, I think I've shared the list of activities for 2019.
Yeah, did I?
We spent a lot, we're very proud of what we do here, so. And again, a lot is sponsored by people that step forward in the community and provide this money to help us do these things.
You both showed up after my assist.
Thank you. And again, that's, that's Jerry and, you know, we're a team effort and that's Jerry and Zach that do all that in our office and we're very proud of that.
Question?
Sure.
And this might be for Laura, actually. Some of the, some of the different departments will have revenue-
Yeah.
At the top and then, and then expenses.
Okay, those are different funds. Anything with the 0001, which is what we're talking about here-
Yep.
Is general fund, so that's the tax revenue and that's the beginning of the budget and the first-
Okay, so that department makes any revenue, it doesn't show up because it just zeros out. Is that right? You know, like so for like the summer camp or something where there's a tuition?
That would be reflected when we talk about revenue later tonight, or we can talk about it within the department, that's totally-
No, it's okay, I was just wondering, I didn't know how that worked, but if that's in the general.
Well, if you, yeah, it's page, I'm looking at their, page three, and we can go back and look at, since you have the department here, we can go back and look at their revenue side. If you wanna finish your expenses, we can do that, you know, and then go back. Steve, or do you wanna talk about your revenue?
It's totally, you know, it's fine. What we, what we try to do is, on the, on the revenue side is, we sit with Tom and the rest of the team on each program, whether it's basketball, whether it's, and try to identify reasonable costs. Because again, it's, it's, it's our community and we're trying to, we're trying to make it reasonable, let the kids to come to camp or to Bradford Trout or to whatever program we're offering, make it reasonable and also to offset, you know, our costs. So we've never, we've never done anything to try to make money, but we wanna cover our costs. So it's, sometimes we're very successful in being able to identify and break even, sometimes we're not. And I think for the most part, I asked Tom to, and whoever's involved in the camp or basketball to do, to provide, provide my office and myself a after event or after a program reports and generate that. And we're, we're getting better at that, you know, a few years ago, we were not being able to identify those costs. But as far as the camp is concerned, we get, we get, like Fern, I'll use a Fern, a base, a triathlon that has been held well before when I got here. They, I don't know if you remember, they've come forward and they give us two checks. And those two checks, one is in the trust and one is in the rec funds. And those are designated funds within our budget that, whether I'm here or Michelle's here or someone sitting in my seat, those are restricted funds within our budget. And what's nice about that is the trust is a financial aid fund. And it's, it's not, it's not subjective. Someone comes to our office and needs financial aid to send their kid to a program, then we have them, it's, there's a form that they fill, they fill out and they will have to provide us some paperwork. And we go through the HUD, HUD housing, up-to-date housing numbers and it's, it's not subjective. We try to help as many people as we possibly can to that fund. And if, if that's not enough, then we can send them to the spray fund. And so we don't turn anybody away from trying to help them with our programs. And so we're very proud of that and I think we're pretty successful in trying to help most people. Whether, unfortunately, it's a one program, they either do it for Bradford Trout or summer camp and if they need, they need multiple programs and spray funding, usually help them out too. But to answer your question, most of our programs that we identify, we try very hard to, to try to obtain enough, you know, program money or charge enough to deal with.
Break even?
Yeah, break even. Okay.
No, wait, yeah, so yeah, but those, they're unlike the management funds and the enterprise funds, it's more described the departments, we have general revenue that comes in and each department shows its functions in this way, we could track it differently-
Sure.
And create funds, but we have our select six management funds.
It would still, it would still be pushed into this fund at the end, so it's, it's better here.
All right, go ahead. So you were on programming and then-
On programming and so, so the next, the next, the next account would be the, this, the new parks recreation senior account, which is new 1840. So this one is a little bit difficult for us because we're setting up this new, this new account. And so the easy one was to move Karen Flint's wages and benefits over, so those, the first, from 50101 orbit right over to 50125 was easy. The rest of it, we are identifying those account numbers and just moving them from the parks maintenance and programming and identifying what we think is a best case scenario based on what Michelle does by paying out for different accounts for office supplies, operating supplies, heating fuel, purchased water, sewage, and identifying what we believe all those accounts will be used for, for the next fiscal year. Obviously, next year, we'll have a better idea because now we're gonna be able to, next year, we can come before you and say, okay, you know, we were a little bit off, either up or down on these accounts, and we'll have a better operating structure for, for that particular building in operation for everything. So I think this is our best, you know, our best approach to this for being, you know, the first year.
Steve, the heating fuel source of that building, is it oil or is it gas?
It's, that is oil there.
Is there gas available?
Well, I talked to, I talked to Jeff about that and I think there's, there's gas in the area, but I think it would be very expensive to bring it down, down to the, to the end of that area.
Because you have it at the little league field, right? It's piped in or you use propane?
No, it's oil there too, at the-
Little league?
No, little league field.
Oh, I mean, at the, oh, yeah.
That's gas, yes.
That's gas, so that's piped in gas, right?
And we certainly can take a look at, I know that Jeff was here, we did ask that question, but they're two branded oils that do-
Right, I know that. I'm just trying to get what elements have the oil versus the gas throughout the town.
All right, so that would conclude your operating.
Did you have a question on, until you had a question on?
I guess my question was just that these were basically the same numbers carried over since you don't have the history?
Yeah, yeah. Again, we sat, we took a lot of time trying to identify them, but I mean, if we did, it is kind of a, you know, we're gonna-
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks.
And so that is our, that's our budget.
Okay, so for capital.
So, well, the other thing I was just going to mention, along with his operating, he did refer to his park and rec aid program, so that is also in this budget. There's no budget for it, but it is part of the document, so in the back. The park and, park and rec aid program, scholarship program that he talked about as well as the park and rec trust. He referred to them, they are in the document, but there is no set budget. So CIP is on page, I have it over here. Page 51? So you can just go to your first project, Steve, which is the landscape trees?
So that, so that one, we just, that one is identified as $1,000 a year and that's something that we use, Joe Javi and Parks Maintenance uses for miscellaneous trees that either get destroyed in the parks and we have to replace them. So it's, it's not a lot of money, but it's just something that we use for, again, for the, you might want to choose, it's not a lot of money.
Yeah, it's the rest of the-
Vehicle replacement.
Okay, vehicle replacement. We attempt to identify and replace one vehicle a year if required. And we had identified PR 7, 2007, 550 dump. However, just over the last two weeks, and this is, you all know during, you know, the operations, we, we have been, we have been told by DPW that our PR 4, which is a 2004 350, has over $10,000 worth of work that needs to be done. So I am going to respectfully ask that we, we put this in place of this PR 7 and we will, we will hold off on PR 7 for a year and, and place this PR 4 in its place.
Is it dollar amount?
Same, same, it's the same type of truck, it's a one ton.
Okay.
Dump, it's a dump truck, yes, sir.
Maybe you just push the one out that's not in that shape?
Yep.
And then number three is lighting replacement?
Lighting replacement, yep, and as you know, we do use, we use a lighting replacement as, as a placeholder for all of our lights in our little, our little league fields. But then if we don't have, we don't have that big issue with replacing our lights, then we also identify our capital. And this year, we've been replacing the old electrical panels in, either on tennis courts, gazebo park. And you all know, and one, one project that is identified and we talked about in town is that one single pole, a telephone pole at gazebo park that feeds the entire park that's across motion road. I get calls on that all the time about putting that installation, that line that feeds the park underground. So it's one pole, I'd like to be able to put that, I want to put that on CIP for the last five years. That will be part of this, this request to remove that pole and bring that electrical line into the park.
They don't like the pole up?
So that's why it's 22 instead of 10? That's why it's 22 instead of 10?
Exactly. And that's why, then that's why it's 22 instead of 10.
Number four, you have court surfacing?
Yes, so good news on court surfacing. We, we have out the, we have, we have out, in fact, it will be on, it will be on the May 6th agenda for $106,000. We were able to, John Wallace and engineering department's credit, we were able to identify a product and a procedure where we can have three courts done this year and be able, and be able to get the pickleball courts at Clock Road be done, resurface the court at Boone Street and also do the court at George C. be done.
Except the basketball and the tennis?
The tennis. And so those are our three, those are, well, particularly the, the pickleball courts and George C. were our biggest issues. The Boone Street Court, there's a slipping hazard, that's just, that's just putting a coat on it, a coat to put some wind into it, so that's a small job. But the, so that's gonna be done upon your approval, if you approve it, that was a bid and that's May 6th. So what will happen here is that will provide us the ability, again, if the CIP is approved, to be able to go ahead and do the other court surfacing, which is in the Eastwood Lock Basketball Court, Metatuxet Basketball Court, and possibly the Clock Road Basketball Court. And, and then we can then go back and go take a look at the spray tennis court, which we just need a resurfacing. I, I think with this new procedure that John has, and he's gonna be able to be there to explain this, we may be able to do a little bit more with our money and let it extend a better, so very pleased with, you know.
So Steve, how, how much did that bid come in at?
$106,000.
And that's all free?
And we had, we had, I think we had $120,000 just for George C.
So I'm, just because of how, how we worked this budget, so 100, you have 170 as of this year?
Yeah.
106 would leave you 64,000 for next year. We anticipated in this budget carrying over 85, but it will only be 64. So we have 64 going forward, so I'm just raising that issue now as to whether you need more than 64 to go to your 1920 budget.
That would be for these, for these three, those three basketball courts.
T-shirts.
I think if we could, if we could add 40 to that, up to, around the 106 again, I think we'd be able to do that.
So they are looking for an additional $40,000?
In part number four?
Yeah. I think that would be safe. And again, just like we did with this year, if we can save the money, then I'm not, you know, we don't, I, I, that's, that's always been our approach. Just because it's here doesn't mean we spend it. We, we always look at a more conservative way to be able to do a project and keep it, you know, keep it, the cost down and if it's, if the end result is good, that's all we're looking for.
And that would mean the 92 years out, would that go down?
Yes, absolutely.
And the tennis courts and the pickleball courts and the basketball, those are some of the most popular things in town.
And they are, and they are. You know, I think we had this discussion last year, the, the pickleball courts are becoming more and more and more popular. And so I'd like to get, I'd like to get the ones, the ones at Clock Road and if we get those done and see how they work out. The tennis courts are still popular, but the pickleball courts, people come into town and, and once the weather breaks, they're, they're on there all, every seven days a week. And they're really, they're really asking for more. And it's becoming a very popular sport.
So then we'll come back to that, so we'll start that one, Laura, so that's gonna be-
I did, I put it on the front of my budget to talk about.
That would mean there'd be 125?
Actually, I would change the, I will, I will just rework it so that it's new funds of 40 is needed. Right now, it looks, it's all prior funding.
Okay.
So I will, it will end up being current revenue source of 40 with the 64 in place of the 85 on, on the project, Park Chief. I'll work out with you, Jeff.
All right, any questions on that? All right, park rehab.
Park rehab is been identified this year for bocce courts at Spray near the tennis, tennis building, various paving, minor paving in our parks, which has been heated, the entrance to Cristofaro, parking the area of Cristofaro, the little lot, the paving at the loop road at the tennis building and security system for administration for our office. And then also some additional playground work at Spray Park.
Are those new bocce courts or maintenance?
New.
New. Where they gonna go, on the side of the-
Yeah, where, if you, on the, on the face of the building and the side, yeah, the other side of the tennis courts.
Are your courts here now?
They're courts, yeah.
Is there a big demand for bocce?
Yes, there is, yes.
You mean get phone calls and say, hey, where's the bocce?
The same, the same pickleball.
They have the stuff down in Florida, they come back here and they-
Yeah, it's, it's interesting.
We tried for pickle and tennis for that one?
No.
It's just something for-
Yeah, so they're open, just like that tennis is open.
Just gonna schedule it.
Yeah, yeah, if we get, if we, yes, we do have to schedule a pickleball now.
So where will the bocce be exactly?
To, you know where the, you know where the little turnaround area is, where I wanna, we wanna pave it because it's, it's getting all beat up and aggressive, getting beat up, right, right off to that area there. It's gonna be-
Behind the tennis, the Sprayville?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna-
In the wall?
Well-
Or it'd be like closer to the road?
Closer to the road, I think, yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna fit it so it's, it's out of the way of the tennis, obviously, and, and close to the building, so it fits in within the landscape down there.
How many courts?
Right now, just, just, just one, yeah. Just to kinda get people in-
Yeah, something new.
How many courts do you get at the bocce?
We get, we get-
A dozen?
People wanna see, you know-
I didn't know there's bocce courts, I just thought you just went and played official courts.
Be honest with you, people like to see a wall down towards-
Like the sand, right?
I get a lot of calls for putting things at gazebo park and you're like-
Right, just take the pole down.
Yeah, take the pole down.
And then the Forest Court about that one, some will be, what the hell's that pole doing out there?
Okay, then we have park number six, equipment replacement.
So this, this is, you know, as I, as I try to do every year is, again with our vehicles, is we try to look at the equipment that Parks Maintenance Crew is using. They have two old 1999, 2000 Steiners. The Steiners are pieces of equipment that have multi-attachments on, in fact, these things have 12 to 14 different attachments. They have the brooms, the snow blowers- They have the brooms, the snow blowers, and?
No bocce courts?
No bocce, no bocce courts. So we want to start replacing both of these down the road. So what, so what Joe has identified is a Ventric 4500C tractor. The nice thing about this is it will take the attachments from the Steiner. So we're not buying, I'm not going to sit here and tell you, we're buying a Ventric tractor and not have to go buy all the accessories and have to start, every year coming in here, I need to buy all the, have to buy all the accessories. What's nice about this, buy this tractor, and all the 2000 year old, you know, the year 2000 accessories, which are all in good shape, will fit this tractor.
Is that the same company? Must be the same company.
Yeah, you know, I'm not, that's a good question, I'm not sure, but he had this, he does tell me that they will fit, and so, it just, it was going to be less than.
Fence replacement?
Fence replacement, as you know, we have fencing throughout town, and it creates a big problem for us. So we go, this is where we do use the state MPA, and on, on May 6th, you will see a, you will see a proposal to do fencing for Cristofaro. And so what we're asking to do is to increase, increase this one from 40 to 52 for George C. So I'm asking to increase to 52.
Okay, so on, on May 6th, what's that for?
Cristofaro.
And how much is that bid?
That one's going to be, wait, I'm done, let me just hold my shot. Yeah, that was, that's going to be 52 on May 6th, which is part of, which we have in fencing.
I don't believe you do.
Yeah, I, I, I have that on the agenda, we talked about that, we're gonna?
Where's the other money?
We're gonna take that out of parks we have.
That's, that's the other 10?
Yep.
I'm just trying to put all my puzzles together.
Yep.
So the 10 that I had extra, sorry, I'm just going back, so?
So, while Laura's figuring that out, what we started to do, as you all know, is our fencing was in horrible shape and falling down, and we have our kids out there, obviously. So the first thing we did is we, we've done the three, we've done the three backstops. And Little League was actually donated by somebody, and he did a fabulous job, he donated everything, and that was, that was a huge donation. So what we're, what we're trying to do is, and it's big money, I, we've pulled out a lot of this big money, so what we're trying to do with, with what we get every year is take one project at a time and finish it. So at George, at George C., through the MPA, Costco has provided us a quotation to finish from the, from the backstop out, and all around, plus the, the top yellow protector for the kids, is 52,000. Next year, next year, we want to do, that's Cristofaro, next year, we want to do George C., and that would be 48,000. 48,393.
So you need another 10?
Yes. And then, what I want to do is probably in two years from now, is do Big Spray, which is $122,000. That's huge. So that's why we need to push it out, give me, push it out quite a ways, because that's, that's a lot of money. And we realize that. But that's our, that's our premier field, that's what high school uses and everybody in town uses that, so.
So were all those fences built around the same time initially? When was that?
It was in the 80s and 90s.
And so are they, what is it, rusty or?
They're, they're all starting to fall apart, they're all, yeah. You, you can see it, they're all in different phases of deterioration. That's, that's why, what we're using now is the fabricated fencing, the galvanized fencing with a, with a rubber coating on it. Again, nothing lasts in perpetuity, but these will be tomorrow's, yeah. And they do, these guys do a great, do a great job, and, you know, I encourage you to go take a look at the backstops, and you can go up and take a look at them, and they get, they get really beaten up by, you know, especially the backstops.
From bowl?
Yeah, it is. That's what they do. But it's nice to, it's nice to have, instead of you sitting here and saying, well, I think it's going to cost this much, I mean, at least I have some odd numbers. I, I know in two years it might be adjusted a little bit, but it's something that gives it.
All right, so you have community center renovation?
So this one?
I can fill you in a little bit on this, we knew it was a, a building that the council would want to weigh in, and so the manager made no recommendation. Just when you see there's no budget for it.
Wait, it's pushed out to the following year?
Who wants this year?
Yeah.
2020. So this one's been in the CIP, in our CIP for a number of years, it's finally made it to the, to the, to the forefront, where we had Frank Koppowitz design the renovations for a new roof, windows, and siding. And so it's out, it's out to bid, it's out to bid now. In fact, tomorrow, tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, we have a walkthrough with potential, potential bidders to, for the renovation. I have in, correct me if I'm wrong, how much is in the, what's the balance?
160.
160. What Frank Koppowitz has, has estimated is, is that we're coming at 4.20. So, and that was with mini split HVAC units. I don't think, if you remove those units, it should look very conservative, that's going to be 400. We're hoping that it comes in a lot less than that, obviously. So we'll have a better number when the bids come in. My suggestion to, to you all is, if it's at all possible, we have $291,000 sitting in an account in the parks Kenny Bungalow account, that previous council had discussed and denied the opportunity for HVAC. We have a building that is utilized now, that we need, the roof is leaking, the siding is falling off, and it needs the windows. We have an active project going on. I'd like to ask you if you would consider taking whatever the balance we need from that account and moving it into this refinery, so you can take the difference between the 160 and whatever the bid is. As long as the bid is, the low bidder is, low bidder and qualified to do the job, I think, we're just looking for a hot blood product. So we're going to have a building that's going to last for many, many years, and we're going to have a roof that's going to last for many years.
Do you redo the AC too? Did you say redoing the AC unit?
Well, we're, we've got some, we've got some, we've, we've got some, we've got some mini splits and rooms that the AC doesn't cover, so we can, we can, depending on the price, we can say, yeah, don't, don't put those in.
The AC, this is the AC in the basement, is it?
No, those are window units. So that's where the mini split is going to go.
Laura, can you walk us through that then, if you're going to not do Kenny work?
Okay.
Is that money really still there?
Exactly. So, here is slightly different numbers, I've worked after Steve and I talked today, today. The fund balance that we had left in Kenny was $263,000. And we used basically $50,000 to balance the budget already, which leaves us 213. Now I think we're going to be using about 40 of that for the elevator.
We started today. Where?
Oh, so you have to subtract the word in.
But I already have 49 spent for the elevator. Steve, that was kind of my, another question. I have 49,000 spent in this year towards the elevator?
Well, that's what you told me, you already had, you already deducted that 49. We haven't spent any money on the elevator, so.
I had to peel pools from the budget.
I have, I can't get into my munis at the present time, but I have 49,000 spent, and it was to the, whatever the name of that elevator company is.
Tissen.
Tissen, thank you.
So I'm just going to assume that when the purchase order was done for that, once it had been approved, so that money came out of that?
We have done no other work on the elevator in the last 12 months?
No, no.
Just making sure.
It started today.
Okay, I'm just double checking because I had that. So that in essence, needing 40, we really only have 160 available out of Kenny.
With the elevator, 86, plus the coaster, on that? You have the elevator in 86 or?
No.
No, it's 40.
49.
I would say 40, yeah, 48 change.
Well, it, it's, it's one of those elevators that had to be completely, by code, it had to be completed, you know, with a new handle on it.
Telephone.
It's, it's, they're not, they're not, they're not cheap. And, and we've had it inspected, and we've had, we've done all of our due diligence, and I think, I think the towers is going through the same type of, you know, they're not cheap, just to make this, it's not easy.
So for these, so we have 100 in this document, but that's not correct, right? The 100 is just a placeholder in there?
But it's next, uh, next year, 2021, and that was for a generator.
Maybe mine, I don't know.
You see other department 100?
No, it's the top, the top section of the page, it has?
Estimated cost? I, I can overlook that.
What page are you on?
On 19?
Page 59?
100, yeah.
Yeah.
Because at the time, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't have?
I don't know, mine says 100.
I don't know where, I, I, I just?
Page 51.
Oh, okay, you're not, you're not on the, I'm sorry, you're not in the individual project, the individual project will tell you.
59?
Yes.
So there's one, roughly, there's 160 left.
Right, so we're short about $80,000 then to get to the 400.
Let's just make a note.
So I'll put that on the front as well.
So what are the two numbers that are there?
160, 160 is there.
163 is in the Kenny fund balance?
Yeah, I just rounded it to 160. So basically, we have 160 left in the, in the current year budget?
Yeah.
For this project, and we have 160 that we can pull from Kenny Bungalow's fund balance. So that would leave us 80 short.
Okay, so it's two features basically, and it's still a little short, so we'll have to decide.
Yeah, and that depends on how the bids come up, see, I mean, that's a big, big question.
But you have 400 right now.
The next project is a camp, and again, the manager did make, did not make any recommendations for this project.
So this, I think you're all very familiar with Rec Hall Camp, something we've been asking for since probably 2012. There was a, it's a building that we use for a summer camp, and the only, the only renovations we've had on that building is the roof, and that was paid for by the trust from Howard Kingson. So it needs, that building needs windows and siding, and we have the one that turned it into a year-round building, it would heat it also, but the 125,000 was identified in our CIP since 2012, at least to get started, so we could do the windows and siding, because even with the new roof, because the way the building is designed, the windows leak, and we, pool tables and ping pong tables and other equipment in the building, they're not covered when it rains, we have to pull the kids and the equipment, we have to cover the equipment and get the kids out of there.
So there's no carryover though here?
No, it's 8,000, no, in base.
So maybe that's maybe to take those, the ping pong tables and the pool table and bring both to the community center. I know you've been speaking with the superintendent, I met with him this week as well, there's a lot of interest for the school system to work with you, with us, to have a camp program as well as before school, after school programs there, could all gel really easily, use the school buildings, the gym, things like that. I personally, I like to go that way, because it's just pretty everything to, the personnel at the school could be utilized and funded through you guys.
We're going to put a pool table. Put a pool table with that community center?
We had one existing one, so there's, there's, there's spots that we could, we could, there's a couple rooms that are completely being used in a manner, yeah.
So you're talking about shutting down the currents, parks and camp building on park growth?
It needs about $125,000 to repairs to get it to go on.
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
Right, yep.
So you're talking about shutting it down?
I'm talking about transferring the camp from there to bring it over to community center, which we're investing in, with the, with the intention of, of the superintendent of schools wanting to very much work with us as far as manning it with, with, with teachers' aid and such, so yes.
For, for a kid's summer camp?
For a kid's summer camp, kids after school program, before school program.
When did that happen?
It hasn't happened yet, I'm suggesting that we look at that, Jesse.
You said we're talking to the superintendent?
I was, you guys, she spoke with them and I did.
But no one else has.
Well, that's how conversations start, right? You start talking?
So you're planning this and bringing it up now, but we haven't had any meetings about it?
Well, Jesse, this, this is workshop.
What is, what are people's feelings about the zero, right now it's at zero, do you want to put the money in, or do you want to leave it at the zero, or you can phase it out, maybe it's zero? We can come back and have that conversation at the end of the night, but it's basically, right now it's a zero. Right, the 125 is for the 20, 20, 20, 21 year.
All right. So you want to leave it at zero or?
Um, I?
All right, I'm just going to say, we've talked about building bocce courts?
Yeah.
Pickleball courts, these are for seniors, approving the senior center. And you're going to move one place that's for children and combine it into the senior center. So is there any intention of keeping there against a town where families live and kids live, or is it just about seniors?
I think you're making a judgment that, that you're not informed with what I've just stated. I've, I've met with superintendent, one of the times, he would have interest in working with us, he does. So there's nothing more than just speaking to someone, seeing if they have interests, background work that you do, Jesse, before you come to very?
And he's just writing, transferring that all into the same building?
Well, she's saying that you could have, you could move those things there, and then you don't spend money in the budget on Clock Road.
Bocce courts.
But we didn't, but we haven't said we'd move the bocce courts. We didn't resolve any of those things.
Just, that's what?
Not that I'm resolved, we would, so we can resolve each of those things, but we, you know, that's kind of what we do at the end, because there's increases here. I think Steve knows he's not going to get all those increases.
This has been, over a year, so it's been rejected every year, that building.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure out where you're going to stay, two, two pool tables and two ping pong tables of community center, you're going to put them in the basement?
I, well, I have to, I have to go some.
The boy scouts meet, you have other groups meet, and they, they usually have seating and tables and different events.
How many kids go to that summer camp?
Right now, we have 50 to 60 kids for a week.
And are there programs at the community center right now that run during those same days that you have? So that's, the community center is empty in the summertime?
No, it's not empty.
But we don't, I don't believe we have any youth programs, camp kids programs scheduled this summer, right now at the community center.
But no, I mean, there's existing programs at the community center in the summertime, for, not for kids, just for adults.
Yes.
So you'd bring the kids over to that same building with the adults?
Well, I, I, I couldn't speak about that, I don't know what.
It's something that we have, that if you all have decided to do that, we'd have to look at it, if it's something that we have. Could be done at the school though, right? Because there is room at the school to run some of us, schools vacant during the summer. Listen, anything's possible, but you just need to, we need to have the resources and the options to do that, I mean, you know, anything's possible. Because the, the camp works well at Clock Road, and? and it functions well because there's room, there's space. And the only thing is on, if it rains, they have to go in the clock center because that building does leak.
What's the roof portion of this project if you separated that out of the?
Roof's done.
Roof's done.
Roof's done.
What's the?
Well, it's not brand new.
It's the windows.
It's the windows.
Is there a replacement? Can you replace them?
No, it's not that easy, it's just.
They're not actual windows, they're just.
Fixed panels.
It's the door.
Fixed panels.
It's the big door that leak, that'd leak. And the next step in a phase two, if you were to stay with this building, you'd be looking at heat and air conditioning as well. Because presently, it doesn't have any of that. So this project is not just a hundred and twenty thousand, five thousand dollar project. If you were to go through with this project completely, you'd be probably looking at about a quarter of a million and up, depending on when you start the project to when you wanna finish it.
That's if you're gonna use it for other things.
Exactly.
Yes.
And originally, this building, you're right, Jesse, this building has been carried on and carried on and carried on. The shingle part of it for the roof, if it wasn't for the hurricane, we wouldn't have gotten that done because it just kept getting pushed and pushed and pushed until the trust, we were able to get the roof done. So this is one of those buildings you look at and say, are we gonna be in the game or aren't we gonna be in the game? You know, do the taxpayers wanna be in the game or don't they wanna be in the game? It's as simple as that. We own a lot of buildings and unfortunately, a lot of our buildings aren't up to stuff. So this is one of those.
But the number is what, if we put it in?
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five.
That was the estimate?
That's, that's a solid estimate. There was a couple years ago. For the, for the siding, windows and doors. It has the side and that's what it is. The problem with the windows is you gotta look at the hurricane windows. You're looking at an AZEP composite trim and the siding would be based on whether you wanna go long-term with some type of material that again is a composite or whether you just wanna go with your basic chains.
But if they went, if they went with a hundred and twenty mile an hour winds with a shuttered system, right? That would cut the cost quite a bit.
The windows, there's a lot of winds, Patrick. It's, it's a lot up in that.
Steve, do you see, or both of you, do you see potential for that building for other uses in other seasons if it was renovated?
Well, what we always, what we always consider is, is there's no, there's no, there's no place where we're year-round, youth can use in, in, in town, you know, absolutely. And that's where I, I, you know, we talked about, we talked about, you know, the community center for after, after, for youth, I'm talking about teens, not just after school, but we're talking about after school program. That's a whole different scenario. I'm talking about teens themselves because that's where, that's where we get, you know, we, we get a lot of calls about after, particularly during the winter. During summer, it's not a problem. During summer.
But they're outside a lot.
They're outside. It's during the winter where there's a void for, for, for teen populations. So for them to have a space to be able to go and have, that would be perfect. Or a place like that would be perfect. Does it have to be that building? Not necessarily.
And one, instead of having, I mean, a lot of the space or windows that are being replaced, that they're having walls of windows, just every other, because it's an octagon, right? It's like an octagon.
Yeah, it's, it's an odd-shaped building.
Yeah.
A lot of the camp jury.
Every, every other section is turning into a siding instead of a window. Cut the cost down and then go with the hundred and twenty mile an hour window. And get fixed windows up top. But you could probably cut that cost in half maybe, I don't know.
So Laura, if we have the dollar figures, sorry to interrupt, if we have the dollar figures on these, when we talk about parks and rec generally, we'll look at all of this and people are gonna have to share their priorities between the tennis court and the, the Clark Road and then we're gonna have to come out and watch.
I have the projects listed with amounts, then we'll readdress it.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to give up much.
So we'll, we'll come back, we'll do all of it together.
Well, I'll take a bullet.
And then you have the veterans.
It's odd, it's odd job to present to you what people are asking for and what, you know, the things, you know, we work with whatever.
Have to tie our.
Just get the kids starting to play bocce a little while.
That's it. The honest with the bocce is the smallest piece of the entire puzzle.
You got like a mentoring program.
And the veterans park is the next phase of the work that you've been doing. We've been working on it, the park, the first park was before Stone Mark, right?
Yes, so this, this one's, this one's pretty straightforward. We actually have, and you correct me.
Twenty-five, twenty-five? But.
This year.
Yeah. And this is the second half.
So this is, this is twenty-five thousand that we're, we're gonna put, we're gonna put it in our, in our PL to get a design for this, for this memorial finally. So we know exactly what is to be done there. We've been kind of, we've been working with the major and a small committee to lower the sundial, mimic, mimic the courtyard, so it looks like the courtyard of the towers. Bring, bring another sidewalk to the last monument and replace some of the park benches there. And the, the problem is that we were trying to do some, the major was trying to do some fundraising there and we, we're not getting anywhere because we don't have a, we don't have a design and specification, so.
But that story I before.
Yeah, thank you. So we need to, we need to get, get this, get this out so we can, we can have a plan.
Do the next phase, right?
The next phase.
Yeah.
And, and then, because we know what we want, we just, we need specifications. And, and, and then, and then we'll be able to put this out next year. So I think, I think this year, this year's money can actually be, we can actually use it for next year, if you follow what I'm saying.
But what's the last, one more?
We could save some money here.
What's the last new one for?
Uh, for the.
Remember we did that, right? Again, the board.
And it doesn't, it doesn't have a, it doesn't have a sidewalk as well. And the idea is in the community.
And the Lions Club donated the money.
The Lions Club donated the money. We have a brand, we have a brand flagpole going in there. And there's no continuity between the park proper and the memorial, meaning that if you're in, if you're in the park proper in the veterans park, you can't, you're kinda, you can't walk into that memorial. You feel it, you have to walk around it. So the idea is to open up some of that fencing and be able to walk in and be able to enjoy that memorial park also. So some good ideas, we just need to, we need to get someone to, you know, to put it on paper so we can have some plans and specs and be able to get it, to get it off the bid.
All right, good. So we'll have a conversation about all those capital projects, but when we wrap, do the wrap-up. But let's, I mean, unless you guys wanna do it now, then I feel like we've, we've gotta get to the other topics like the beach.
But this one's a, this one's a, this one's a.
All right, so the ones that we had discussion on, we're coming back to. So. Beach, so we're gonna look at the beach enterprise fund.
Which is page ninety-four, thirty-two.
Just remember everybody, this is an enterprise fund.
So I can, I can pretty much address the, the big number here is there is a use of fund balance of about eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. They have an unassigned fund balance of three million and that eight hundred thousand is going towards capital. So as, as we're talking through this, you may just wanna keep that in mind when we start talking about capital projects or her the beach.
You can see everything that comes in and goes out here, you see the revenue lines. And then you see what we have to spend on wages and I'm surprised I made that for the beach.
So.
Are there any pilots there?
Yeah, I mean, everything's pretty straightforward.
We've done this extensively at beach work session.
Yeah, I mean, unless you have any questions, you know, miscellaneous revenue, you know, the food trucks, the.
Changes in the fee structure that we put in, we, they did, we basically are still making money as an enterprise fund.
It's been very successful.
So that was successful.
Concert revenue, concession revenue has been very, very steady. In fact, we've had good success with our last concessionaire. They will be back again this year. In fact, just as a note, they, the concessionaire that is at our place had just won the bid for Miss Wanik at Roger Wheeler in Scarborough Beach. So they will be at all of the state beaches this year.
Hopefully that doesn't hurt it.
Are they taking over the T-shirt sales?
No, no, no.
Remember they talked about that?
Yeah, yeah, not yet. We're gonna hold on a while. And then, and then, you know, as you all know, it's, other than, other than our revenue that Michelle collects for the, the lockers and the, and the cabanas and the revenue that we get preseason, which is steady and it's guaranteed income, the rest of it's all weather-related, so.
We had a tough summer, it was weird.
We had a tough.
Cloudy, cloudy.
We had a tough spring last year, but the summer really actually rebounded pretty well.
We had a couple gritty weekends and then we had, then we didn't have proper water. We had a water issue.
Yeah, we had, we had a pretty good summer, it rebounded pretty good last year, but.
So the fund balance there is?
Three million.
Three million.
Unassigned, yes.
And so that's used and that the reason, part of the reason we have that is so that we can absorb the blow from a hurricane.
What are we doing there, a hundred and twenty-five a year for the hurricane?
Yes. And that's been, that's been.
And that's actually sitting in here as a capital project, so.
Is there anything operating, everyone? We can go to the capital project.
Hang on, hang on. The memorial, the veterans park. Is there any way the enterprise fund can take over veterans park and fund it?
It's not part of the beach. We can, I mean, we can make it part of it. There's no reason.
There's no fee that come in.
That's a slippery slope.
Well, it's such a small area and it's such an important area.
Yeah, I don't know. Because if you start doing that, what else are you gonna, what else are you gonna take?
Well, I don't know.
And let's look at our beach capital.
It's important.
Followed first. Eighty-five starts the individual project.
The beach are a improvement. So this, this is our, this is our typical landscaping repairs and other improvements that come up from, from time to time throughout, throughout the year. And so when you're operating a, a beach like we do, there are unexpected costs that come up through the year that, this is our, this is our catch-all. This is, this is our catch-all for just about anything that, that, that comes up at, at that beach. So you have any?
Well, for example, the landscaping that we did last year along the north lot, the funds for that project came out of this, this account. So something like that. We wanted to improve the look, the paving had been redone, kind of.
Softened, softened.
Yeah, kind of did a little, but it looks really hard and.
God rail, god rail that we replace. So any, any, anything that's not just general, general repairs but goes to the next level to come out, come out of here throughout the summer.
And you do have actually a description of what you're planning to spend it on. I have it here, it's, right, new mailing fence for the south lot, dune restoration and the new cut cart.
Yeah, and so, so if you look at, if you look at the south lot right now, the, the god rail that runs from the stone wall right to the south lot, it is in tough shape. So that's one of the projects we've identified and we're working with the, with the chief and public safety for another, another golf cart. One of the most important vehicles that we use on that beach, not only for trash pickup, but for responding down the river for rescues and for, for rescues on our beach is, is our four-by-four gator. And so we'd like to, we'd like to also have the ability to have another, another one down there. We put, we've been hiring a detail officer on special events throughout the summer and weather permitting, obviously. And we typically will put that officer or our security personnel on that gator and they will, when it's, when they can, because sometimes it's just too crowded to put them up there, on, on that gator and they will patrol the beach and use that, use that vehicle. So we have a CIP to add, add another golf, in this case, it'll be aluminum golf cart.
And then you have the sand replenishment, which is pretty consistent year after year. And then you have the renovation of the cabanas.
So the renovation of cabanas, as you know, you approved to hire Frank Koppelisch to do the design. So are you still doing that? Once that design is done, then I'll, I'll be back to you to take a look at, hopefully being here with you. Have that work done.
And all these capital improvements come out of the fund balance for that?
Yes.
And that's the mirror, that's the mirror of the, the west, the west wing.
Few problems, actually missed money.
Then you have renovations for the south pavilion locker.
And, and that is, that is something that we've talked about two years ago. You know, all this, all this, all this work that we're talking about, we actually talk about at the rec advisory board also. And if, and I would encourage any of you to, you know, to come down and visit the south pavilion, any of the beach, and I'd be willing to have to do a tour of the south pavilion. We're actually painting this, this, this fall, this spring, I mean, and weather permitting. The south pavilion is docked and in dire need of some type of renovation so we can encourage our residents to utilize it. More of a surf locker, maybe even a hot shower area in there. So we wanna take a look at that and see if we can design it so more resident-friendly.
Local, down the road.
Local friendly. Local friendly and so that's the, and that is exactly the idea is to, to utilize that space better than, I think you've all heard me say that people are renting those cubby holes and they're not, they're renting them, but they're not renting them, they're renting them so they can get the parking spots. So we wanna, we wanna be able to utilize that space and make it more local friendly.
So this storm reserve is the last one?
Yes. So we're rolling, so you will see exactly what the balance will be at the end of twenty-twenty.
Are you like creating like a sub enterprise, like that's like untouchable?
It's a restricted receipt account, which is probably, and this is, this is probably one of the best things that we ever did because I think the towers is also thinking about doing the same thing. What this does is, is that when, not if, when the next storm, horrific storm hits us, we're not, you're not gonna be faced with saying, oh, we're gonna have to borrow because if the fund, what happened with us with Hurricane Sandy is that the north pavilion was just purchased. So the fund, the fund balance was depleted and so there wasn't a lot of money to, to match the FEMA money. So you had to borrow from a general fund. So this year is gonna be a restricted receipt within, within the enterprise fund. And so we'll be able to use it to match the FEMA money to be able to rebuild, rebuild our beach.
So what's in that restricted account now?
That's the six, we roll it every year. So if you look at the project, it says six twenty-five. That's been the accumulation. So we have a three million dollar fund balance.
And then you'll add one twenty-five to it next year?
Uh, correct. Well, it's five hundred now, add another hundred and twenty-five next year and that comes out of that three million dollars, so it's restricted within that three million dollars.
And, and the good, the good part about this is that you all approved the URI. And, and the good, the good part about this is that you all approved the URI light hour work that was just, just done last week, last Wednesday, I hope you saw them out there. And so I haven't got, I haven't got the results of that back yet, but I'll certainly share that with you when we get that. But that, that's gonna be the base for, you know, for future. And then we'll be able to, you know, do that, that again, you know, in a couple of years. And, and so we'll know what our base here is for the beach, and I think that's extremely important. So we're all excited about that. I know that Jeff, you know, before he left, it was something that he'd worked on for, you know, for many, many years to try to get that here, so I, I think that's very good.
As an enterprise, are there any questions on any of that from anybody on the capital? So then we have the three smaller funds. They're Middle Bridge, Kenny, and Sunset Farm. Uncle's got the middle bridge.
So as far as middle bridge goes, next year will be the last principal and interest payment on middle bridge. But just to, just so you know that there is an end to the draw from general fund to supplement the middle bridge recreation area. So in twenty twenty-one, it should be self-sustaining.
And so the incoming revenue once that goes would be enough to keep it, we don't have to, general fund is gonna do the transfer.
Correct. General fund does not have to transfer anymore.
So.
And just for the future, would we consider that? Because when you do take out what we're paying on that now or in the future, when I added up what that actually takes in, we'd be looking somewhere in a general. I mean, it could be off by five to ten thousand, but we'd have a balance of income probably coming in somewhere at fifty or sixty thousand as it holds after we pay all our expenses.
That's about right.
Yeah, somewhere in there.
Yep.
So that would be great. Would there be any point for the future to, again, make this also an enterprise?
It is an enterprise fund.
So it is.
Even, even, it was set up as an enterprise fund, yet it needs sustaining funds from the general fund. But it is, it is actually in our books and on our, our report as an enterprise fund.
So again, would we choose to, in this fund, because again, most of these places that are around the water, every time we have a storm or a high tide situation, you know, the water gets up into the baccalots and the buildings. So, you know, just for the record down the road, I think that even this one, once it gets established and gets going, it might be also good to put a small amount of that money into an emergency fund to be able to look at if you need some money to offset some of the costs of the storm. So just, just for the record.
So just to summarize though.
But in that bay, in that bay?
Incoming revenue we have, that we have from the moorings, we have from the URI rowing is twenty thousand. We have the rental to, to both the two house, like houses, and then we have the kayak. Those are incoming. And then you have your cost, you know, going out to maintain it.
So, yes, so just to recap, so we have a thirty-seven slip marina, thirty-four on full and three aside. That comes with the increase that you had just approved. The revenue for that is twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars this year. We have two residential leases, the two gentlemen that have been living here since we acquired the property. They pay six twenty-five a month. They're on a month-to-month lease, so that's seven thousand, five hundred each, so fifteen thousand dollars. Now River Kayaks has a lease with us from April two thousand eighteen to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. They're paying thirty-two thousand, five hundred. URI crew has a, has a lease with us through two thousand nineteen, June thirty, two thousand nineteen, with an option to extend one year at a year, so we're gonna need to do that. They're paying twenty thousand dollars a year. And Matt Eddy, very good question, Matt Eddy does not pay the town, but I, I have to tell you, we, we, this is a win-win for, for us and, 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 and that. Matt spends more time dealing with day-to-day operations with the marina. We're in the business, you know, we're, we're in the business dealing with, dealing with customer satisfactions, customer service at the beach and, and throughout the time. He deals with the slip renters, he deals with the kayak people, he deals with the URI crew, he helps the URI crew. Plus all the folks that come and just do the, the soft kayak, you know, when they're parking and just doing it off-season. He cuts the grass, he picks up the litter, he, he hosts all the special events down there. Working with us, he's gonna be the deck that needs to be done on his house. He's gonna be building that himself with the plans that we just had done. So he does a fabulous job and he's a great communicator and he knows the history of the site. And so it's, it's actually like having another full-time employee on having a family. And his family, his family does a great job down there and I, I can't, I can't speak more highly of him. And I think you all know him.
Yeah, we, we received lots of feedback from people. I heard a story about someone that actually needed to have their motor repaired. They called Matt Eddy. He wasn't available, but his wife took their boat, went out and helped these people, told them, "Mann's."
Oh, yeah, the dinner club, yeah. So, I mean, he, and those, those are the kind of stories that you get from them. And so he'll, he'll, he has the type of demeanor where there are issues dealing with people in the public and he'll go down and just try to resolve things.
Better than his grandpa.
Yeah.
Well, you can turn the spotlight and get the hell off of it.
And that, and that's absolutely true. But he communicates well with us and he collects the rent and.
Oh, he does collect the rent?
He collects the rent for us and then brings it to our office, yes.
Do you have any interest in buying the building that he lives in?
So.
So. What, has he ever discussed that? Buying the building that he lives in? Because once the bond's over, we could, we could sell him that building.
I think we have a pretty good relationship with him, it is, so, yeah. See.
If there are any questions on that, do you have, do you have two small capital projects?
Yes, so the capital projects.
Is he a full-time job?
Yes, he does. He works at the engine. So the capital projects here, because, because we now have a better direction, clear direction down there is we, we just had the roof replaced at the marina this past early spring. And starting in July, I'm gonna ask Keith to give us a quote to either paint, scrape and paint the marina building and do repairs around the sofas and slide windows, or completely recite it with, you know, with Hotte boy. And I'll have a better idea of what we're, what we're looking at. So I'm gonna take a look at both, you know, both avenues on, on how to, how to attack that building. So marina building is our number one priority. I also have a interested party that's still, I'm still working with, that cannot name at this time, that has some interest in the yellow building, which is people who, who owns the restaurant building. So they're, they're still looking at the possibility of running a small sandwich shop from, from that location. But they're still tweaking the numbers and seeing if there's any feasibility. The, the, the problem is, is that major renovations required and making it AVA accessible down there. So, so they, they've come back and asked a number of questions that shows me if they have some interest, some major interest, so I don't want to scare them off. And as far as, as far as the interest that we had in doing some landscaping and modifying the entrance, I'd rather do that after we get the, the building situation done and then, and then take a look at that. I know that eventually the master plan is to move the driveway, do some.
So would you remove that then next twenty-five?
No, no, because we want to do that for the build, for the benefit of.
It's, it's actually in this year and we're just carrying the money forward to next year. So it's not a new, new funding, it's a carryover. The only additional funding that's requested this year is four thousand dollars in the building repair.
That's not gonna compromise on subjects?
No. Well, that's, so that's, that's the whole thing. We, we need to take a good look at that. Yeah, take a good look at. That's why I'm not, you know, rushed to get that, get that done.
What's the flood insurance over there?
There, there is no flood insurance.
You just don't carry it.
And that's the other, that's the other problem with people investing in that.
All right, so there's no problems with those two capital projects? All right, so that would be Kenny Bongo.
Oh, sorry, one oh nine and ninety-five, just a couple pages further down. So this is just reiterating what we've already talked about. There's a basically a hundred and sixty thousand available. At this point, it was for additional renovations, but it looks like, well, we may be moving that to a different project altogether. So there's no plans to do any additional renovations right now or any work at Kenny.
And it took from its fund balance last year forty-three thousand, is that right?
Correct. So that's, that's why it's down to the one sixty.
Any questions? On Kenny, the operating person?
Can you break it even?
Well, so we're doing, we're doing better this year with two thousand and nineteen. We've got, we've got thirty-eight events booked. She's had, she's had thirty-one showings so far, so she's, you know, there's an uptick in, in attendance and bookings there. So we got, we have remodeling the men who, as we speak, that's being done, that is being done. So we're, we're encouraged. Again, we're encouraged.
How old is that elevator?
Again, it's, I'm not sure. It was outdated. I can, I can.
So they put a new one in or they just re-cut it?
No, retrofitting, retrofitting.
Nice little AVA plant.
It has to have a phone, it has to, it's just a whole new panel, it's just. They're not cheap.
And then you have one capital project?
No, no capital projects. We're pulling the money. Possibly pulling the money?
Yep.
So you have that note, right?
Oh, yes.
So one sixty in fund balance, so what about then the forty, is that forty from the capital, is that part of the one sixty?
Which?
Is there any? Building renovation and repairing?
Oh, that's already taken out. I already have that taken out.
You already took that out?
You're right. That, that is a capital project. The warming kitchen.
Yeah. All right, any questions then on? Sunset Farm? I remember, did, guys, this is just Sunset Farm. It's just that kind of communal garden area. This is not like the whole Sunset Farm story, right? It was a very small part of the budget, but it used to be a communal, communal garden.
Well, I have to try. Actually, no. Sorry. So there is no real budget for Sunset Farm, other than we do put, so it has a, a fund balance coming forward. And we do budget every year for the insurance and the purchased water. And there is forty-five hundred dollars that's just set aside for building repairs that, if, if needed.
But wasn't it when we first started, it was something about a communal garden and that there were bees coming in?
And we, we actually gave that to the, to the future farmers to use.
There is no revenue, there is no revenue source.
It was a revenue piece at some point or plan.
And there was no use of a community development and had a hard time going out of the community.
No, no, I know. I just, that's, it doesn't make sense that it's a fund.
No, and this will probably be close to the last year in which we can fund anything for Sunset Farm without them transferring money in.
I actually have a message in my office about something, inquiring about.
There you go.
Never a lack for those type of requests.
Future farmers have been involved in.
So there's a small fund balance, I think?
Maybe.
Okay. All right, any questions for Steve on that Sunset Farm? Thank you. I mean, if, if you stay, you'll be able to stay for the discussion, although unless you guys wanna do that now.
It's up to you.
All right, so the priorities for Parks and Rec? It's up to the council, really.
I don't mind, it's up to you, it's up to you.
Yeah, was it just?
Would you like me to run down what?
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Okay, so it's on, it has, the first one is he needs another forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
For the courts. He, he's requesting another ten thousand dollars for the fencing.
Yeah.
Requesting eighty thousand dollars for the community center repairs. And the last project is one twenty-five for the camp.
Okay, so, so part number four was the, that was forty thousand for George D. Pickleball in Boone Street. Ten thousand increase for part number seven. Part number eight was the community center.
Center, yep.
And part number nine is the camp.
Correct.
So then, it's really a matter of if you take that Kenny money, where do you wanna put it? Do people wanna take, first of all, council members wanna, they haven't done it yet.
We already took the Kenny money and put it against the community center. This is still being short, I believe. Yes.
But we could take the Kenny money and put it toward George D. Pickleball and the ten thousand.
Which means you'll be even shorter in the community center.
Which means maybe you don't fund that or you don't fund, you have to make decisions. So I guess, so I see what the council members think about.
So if we want to put it this, then it would be, we have a hundred and sixty thousand available, but we need two forty for the community center.
Right, so then.
Okay.
I guess it's what are people's pri, what are the thoughts and we can found ideas off of Steve as to which of those things you would wanna fund or, or not fund for sure.
Steve, does, do all the community center projects have to be done this year?
Well, there's only, there's only, there's only one project that's out to bid and that's, that's for, that's for the envelope. I'm talking about the building envelope.
But that's multiple aspects of the building?
Well, that's why I say, I think, my biggest question is, it's, it's out to bid and this, this estimate is an architect's estimate on, on the building. And I mean, it's, it's tough to say because depending on the, on the climate out there, how many, how many people show up and bid and how aggressive they are. This, this could be, this could be, you know, a hundred thousand dollars cheaper. So we could be, we could be in better shape than we're thinking about now, or we could be right on and be at four hundred thousand dollars.
But I, I guess what I'm saying is, so it's, it's the roof, the siding and.
Yeah, windows. The thing is, is once you're doing a project like that, it doesn't make sense to go back and have, once you're doing the roof, it makes sense to do that entire building envelope. It's all in the exterior, really.
Yeah, well, why, no, I'm saying, I mean, you could easily just do a roof. Are you saying that you have to do it this way?
Well, I mean, yeah, because they're on site, they're gonna, they're set up, they're doing, you know, it just, it just makes sense to do the entire project. Now you're going back out to bid, you're gonna just do the windows and siding in three years. I mean, listen, anything's possible.
Yeah.
Are you gonna address the drainage issue?
Well, that's part of it, yes. That's absolutely part of it.
So you basically have four things, so the question is, there's one sixty from Kenny. Does, do people wanna take the one sixty from Kenny? I guess is the first question and move it to Parks and Rec?
I do.
Sure?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
So then it's a matter of what you put it toward. You either can kind of put it toward the community center or, and then you're still short, or you can scatter it among the other three. Those are my choices. So what, your thoughts on that?
Well, the community center doesn't need to be revamped. There's no question about that. Well, the community center doesn't need to be revamped, there's no question about that, and again, you bring the contractors in, you ask them to do a roof project, they set up for it, they do a roof project, then they leave, then they come back a year later, the costs of doing that, and we ran into that with the water towers in the town. We set the project up, you only do part of the operation for them to come back, caution on the, on the water tower side, caution another eighty thousand just to set up. So in these particular projects, you're best to package it together, put the roof, do the windows, do the siding, and do the trim, get the exterior of the building where it needs to be, and then we're done with it, we put the right material on it. And that part of the building is done, yes, there is a cost to it, and there's, and there's people who bring up through the course of the budget and the course of town meetings, is, there's a price to pay now, and there's a price to pay later. So every day these projects don't get done, there's a cost, that it's costing the town and the taxpayer. So it's a matter of, do we do it, or do we, again, as I had mentioned before, I've mentioned before, do we kick the can down the road? This particular project needs to be done. To me, the community center is very important, it's a, it's a resource center for our community, and our seniors, our, our youth, there's a lot of activity that goes on, there's different organizations that use it, there's actually organizations that pay to use it, so. We're getting started now, this project, Steve's getting it started now, this isn't going to happen in two months, it's probably, this phase of this project will probably not start to get off the ground till probably September, October, November, before we get into it. And then you have the winter months coming, so you'll be stalled there as well. So for me, I would say with this particular project, I'm willing to move forward.
All right, so that, that you take the Kenny money and move it to, what is it, what else, thank you.
I would do as well.
All right, Patrick?
Hmm, I guess, yeah, I mean.
We can come back to the other.
We're breaking even, we're breaking even with Kenny, right, basically?
No, I think, I think they're doing, I mean, I used this argument of defense last time, is that you can't, I think the last time we talked about that, we included the capital money into the, into that. We moved the capital from Kenny, we're, we're breaking even and making a little bit more ourselves, and my, my, my argument, my defense to Kenny is, is that they're, they're serving the needs of not only of our local community, but preserving a historic building, and, um, I, I think it's, I think people in the community have access, we're trying to, we're trying to provide more opportunities there. I think it's a good thing, I really do, and so. Without losing money.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, Jesse?
Uh, I'd prefer to put it towards the camp.
To Clark Road?
Yeah, because you could get the whole thing done finally, it's good, you get some other year, so that's where I put it.
All right, so I think Clark Road, the Baji, and the, those who we will come back to later in the night, but it seems like there's a consensus to move the one sixty to the community center, and you have one sixty carry over. So we have to make that decision, but that doesn't mean we're, but we're, I don't think we're going to resolve the other three, because we've got to see where else we can.
Yeah, sure.
You can wait, yeah, but you don't have to, I mean, you don't, yeah, because we're gonna have Mike and everyone come on, yeah.
Is there any way to scale back the Clark Road project? Like, you know, like I said, it's all a black issue.
I, I will do whatever you want me to do, I mean, a lot of those windows are fixed now, Patrick.
Yeah.
That's, you know, I mean, I, I've been, I'm on, I've been on the rec advisory board, so I've toured the building, we've looked at it, we've looked at it from all the different avenues, like Patrick says, you know, do you close off part of the glass, because glass is expensive, plywood's cheap. But it still takes a design, and we need people to be able to go there and, and frame it up, so you're changing the construction of the building, with some of the new codes, even though we're a town that's more advanced, we have to follow the codes. When you get into reframing old structures, there's codes you have to follow, so you just can't go in and reframe something out and say, well, the existing was like this, so, you know, we're gonna do this, there's a lot behind it. And it is cost, we're working with the prevailing wage, and for people that don't understand the prevailing wage side of it, if you can get somebody to do work at your house for the twenty to twenty-five hours an hour, prevailing wage is usually, starts at the fifty, and, uh, depending what they're doing, depending what unions are in there, so. All these projects cost twice as much when you're working with the municipalities and what we have to deal with. It's unfortunate, but those are the state laws, and that's what we're up against.
All right, so that's capital part number eight, and so we're gonna go to our next topic, right, you got that? And then, so Mike and Steve said something. It's our public work.
I got it, everybody.
Yeah, you come on up, yeah.
So my boss?
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you.
Council budget, it starts on fifty?
And so we're gonna be doing D P W, page fifty-two. And if he gets ready, before I step out, but Chris, you also on the road bond.
Uh, good evening, so Public Works, Public Works is made up of four divisions, admin, facilities, highway, and fleet maintenance. Admin's made up of three and a half people.
Yeah.
Three full timers, and twenty hour work, twenty hour a week. Facilities has one twenty hour work a week employee, no full time staff. Highway division's made up of eight full time F D Es and three part time F D, uh, three part timers. And fleet maintenance is made up of four mechanics. Three of those mechanics were always full time with, uh, D P W, and the fourth was acquired when, um, D P W acquired West Marine and Spring School Block. Admin, um, the only major increases in admin are pretty much the contractor and the one request for the, um, the new color printer. Our lease was up on our current printer, and the new printer, we're actually looking into a color, we want to reduce all of, everybody having a separate printer on their desk, how, if we go to the one, we're actually gonna pay less than the lease we had with a black and white printer. So that's the only request for that division. Public Works facilities, same thing, there was an increase in town hall cleaning, which is, which is, it's overtime wages for F D Es to clean here at town hall in the evenings. And that's, that's over a three-year average, so that's where that increase was bumped to the actual cost that it's been. And then the only major increases were water with Suez this year, and we actually had a, um, three thousand dollar defense with the electricity for the facilities that we need.
Heating, Mike?
Yeah.
What, uh, what's the source?
Heating, so.
The source, just the source?
Yeah, so the heating, it's, it's gonna be multiple sources, um, so that's natural gas at this facility.
Okay.
That's propane at D P W, uh, at Westmoreland, partial propane at Ava Street, and partial oil at Ava Street, so we're kind of a mixed bag.
So at D P W, you guys are using propane, but yet down the street, of how far you have natural gas?
Give or take three hundred feet.
And the cost to get that and bring it to the facility would be roughly?
Twenty-five to thirty thousand.
And the prob, one of the issues that you might have down there, so you have to call when your propane tank?
We're supposed to be on automatic, but the way automatic set is set up, the computer spits out what your usage is supposed to be, our facilities, we have eight overhead doors that open up constantly all day long, so our building to stay maintained at sixty degrees is working overtime constantly, we constantly run out of gas.
So you're calling, you're out of gas.
Yeah.
It becomes a hassle. Do you think the overall cost of, of tapping into the natural gas, um, and over maybe a five to ten year period, would reduce the cost of what natural gas is, or make it more convenient, less time consuming?
I, I think it'd be more of a convenience, I mean, right now, between the two, the, uh, with the rates that we locked in at propane versus natural, I guess that's why we didn't forego, that's why we forego installing natural gas a few years ago. But in long term, over time, yeah, extending the natural gas, changing the facility over, natural being on a constant, our usage would be way down.
And you wouldn't have to worry about it?
No.
During storms, anything like that, you'd have it automatically, sure.
Highway division, most of them are contractual, uh, only slight increase, the increase, um, the, I was actually awarded, we had to make a, um, we had to shift money to cover the, was it forty-seven, or forty-two, or forty-seven percent increase that Suez? Was, um, awarded from the P O C this year, so that's what it shifted our two hundred and fifty thousand a year for purchase water to three hundred thousand a year for purchase water. And highway division, I mean, uh, excuse me, um, vehicle maintenance, same thing, mostly contractual, we actually had a reduction in our contracted services, that's the, um, when we had the oil spill at D P W within the building, when the, the old floor was leaked, and we had to have the run redone. So we have to have, we had to have constant testing, our numbers have gone down, so the price has gone down because of D M's now, they issued us a letter that we can go to, instead of quarterly, we can go to here, testing our half year testing, so the price has dropped, um, to probably twenty-four thousand a year, fifteen thousand a year, so that's a reduction. Gasoline and lubricants, those just have gone up, and, and we actually are coming next week, we're actually, um, purchasing the new laptop now, and, uh. We haven't made any increases in vehicle maintenance, repair itself, the two hundred thousand is gonna stay, we, um, we get paid by the enterprise fund from the school system, and the water, wastewater in the beach, and even though our line may show major overage, when those other enterprises pay out, we'll usually run, we're running right at even, even by the end of the year, so, um, vehicle is running pretty smoothly there. So that's pretty much the operator, with the, no major changes from last year.
Any questions on operating?
Want the capital?
These are copies I'm just handing out to you guys of our vehicle inventory and replacements, just so that you have more stuff to do, copy. She wants that for you. Whoever wants, you don't mind copying them.
No, okay. Actually, it goes this way right now.
Chris can have my copy.
So capital for D P W starts on page forty, forty-two.
So this is, uh, garage building renovation improvements, uh, the last few years, we've done, um, some, uh, exterior door enhancements, and some overhead door replacements, now we're looking at, um, security system, um, and, uh, essentially this is, this is for security, some, some more cam, we have one camera now, to add another camera, and to start adding some security fence and gate in the facility, see how this D P W is, the fueling depot for the, for the town. We want to try and make it a more secure site, um, and after hours, um, so we are looking at some sort of gate somewhere, we're not sure, because it's, we have a unique situation where you don't come down Westmoreland Street, you turn into somewhere, our facility is the end of the street, so we'd actually be gating off some of the roadway, so we're not exactly sure how we're gonna configure it yet, but we're looking into it, and so it's more to protect the fueling depot, with, you know, everything that's going on now, and as well, and whatnot, to secure the site. Um, which, which we don't have right now, it's, it's open to anybody anytime, so. Um, project, um, project number two is continuation of the, um, storm drain upgrades within Eastwood Look. Eastwood Look was built in the early seventies, so we're looking at a forty-five or fifty-year-old storm drain system with corrugated metal pipe that's long past its life, and it's, 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 uh, failing faster than we can repair it, so we're doing about seven to eight hundred feet, just under a thousand feet per year, um, on selected roads, so.
So I have, I have a question, Mike, I don't have any expenditure yet this year?
We have, we have in this year, we're gonna get into it in the next, um, few weeks, we're, we're gonna be picking out the, uh, sections and getting this, this.
You know, because it's at this point, and I just wanted to know, there is no expenditure yet this year?
We will.
So I was just making sure he was, so that we, you know, as opposed to a carryover, so, uh, it is playing the game.
How big's the pipe?
Thirty-six, well, it is, drops down, um, bigger and others? It starts, uh, Eastwood Look, uh, over by Sanaa Boulevard, starts at sixty inch pipe, reduces down to forty-eight. Reduces down to forty-eight, down to thirty-six, down to twenty-four, down to twelve.
Can you just slip in a sleeve?
No. It's failed.
And you can't?
There's, it, it, you could sleeve it if there was, you could sleeve it if there was just slight deterioration.
Right.
We're taking out pipe that has zero bottom left to it, right. It has, it has zero bottom.
Put a smaller pipe inside, deal with the pipe? Just keep pushing it?
It doesn't work, it doesn't work that way, so. You want to get that metal pipe out of the ground?
What's the percentage of what's been done?
We're halfway through.
Halfway?
Yeah. We're halfway through.
One hundred forty-seven.
Are there any other neighborhoods besides Eastwood Look?
Robotic shores.
Robotic shores would be the next place that we'd stop.
We're currently, and we're currently doing some, we're doing three hundred feet on Third Street right now, also down by the, um.
Spain's.
Behind, yeah, we just actually did, we did a hundred and twenty, or a hundred and fifty feet, or two hundred feet behind Spain Restaurant, and now we're doing another three hundred over on Third Street, so it's sporadic, it's.
Most of these places, again, low water, high water table.
Right.
We have an issue with drainage, um, I've driven through quite a few of these neighborhoods, so it's a concern now, because depending on this season here, you get a lot of rain, and in just the month of April, I don't know how many days we've actually had it, but if you try it down there.
Sixteen out of twenty-three.
Right, so, this pipe is old, um, again, once they get into these projects, you know, sometimes the money that they have isn't enough. Again, once they get into these projects, you know, sometimes the money that they have isn't enough to finish. This money comes out of, what, repair, bond, is your general budget?
It's a budget, it's just a budget.
DPW capital.
DPW capital, yeah.
And it's been there for, it's a consistent-
Yeah, it's every, every year it's fifty, seventy-five, fifty, seventy-one.
You said halfway, what's the total length of time for it?
We've got, we've, so we're halfway through the northern part of, uh, Eastwood Look, which is the largest part of Eastwood Look. I would say we're halfway to three-quarters through there. Some of the, some of the newer section of the northern part has a bunch of concrete pipe in there, so we don't have to touch that. And then we need to move over to the southern half. Southern half isn't half as large as the northern half, so we should be able to build to there in a year or two and, and pretty much plug up, um, the southern portion.
You're replacing with concrete?
No, we're replacing with ADS-plastic.
I haven't, I wasn't able to get away with putting the metal pipe.
Metal pipe was the only thing available back in the seventies, besides concrete. But at the time, like, metal was cheaper, it didn't smell. But metal pipes submerged in high groundwater table for fifty years or forty years. Project number three is, uh, storm drain general. And storm drain general, that means, it's just like we talked about, Third Street, behind Spain, other sporadic issues that crop up around town. We go in and we, we camera section, if we got three-hundred feet of that and then we get into good, we replace that three-hundred feet, so essentially that's what this fifty thousand covers. We're actually doing the Third Street project with forty-eight thousand just for that project, so.
Basin was a tough one for you too, I bet.
Basin was a good project. So essentially that's what that, that, that helps us with, with those there. And the emergency projects that come up, you know, when this one's completed, you know, we, we jump into pavement management, pavement management helps pay for that other stuff, so.
But the pavement management is what goes, that's, that's the day-to-day fixing and maintenance of the road.
Major job. Project number four is right here, Town Hall renovations.
Again, this is another project that the council did not make a recommendation for any additional funding. Right now, the balance in that, uh, account is two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars.
So what we're looking at, so the major, to look at that expenditure of that two-hundred-and-eighty-five would be forthcoming, this year, would, uh, will be coming to you guys on May twentieth for the presentation for a whole new, um, facade to the building, a whole new landscape look. So with that, what we're proposing is to eliminate the existing handicapped elevator. That thing's about on its last leg, we need to replace it. We're looking at about just fifty thousand just for that little elevator to replace. And what happens when, when people that are ADA come to this facility and aren't really sure, they don't know, they gotta go to that elevator to go down to the first floor to get back into the first floor elevator to come back to the second floor. It just doesn't make sense, it just doesn't work. Our new proposal is to actually build a courtyard in the front of the town hall with two slope ramps that ramp down to the main entrance. There is a design, you'll, you'll see it in a couple of weeks, it's, it's, it's very inviting, it's very nice. But what it's also going to allow us to do is, when that excavation is there, we're actually having some water issues in the clerk's office at the moment. We have some water issues on the per, um, purchasing corner of the building also. So that's going to help us when we're excavating for that project, to excavate the full front of the building waterproof, new sub-drain, help deal with that, new drain. Right. So we're going to deal with a lot of things all at one time. We're also going to install future, um, at least get the piping in for future sprinkler system in the building if, if we ever do. But now that would be the time to get the piping in the ground. So it's going to encompass a lot of things, it's going to, it's going to, it's going to take care of a lot of issues all at one time.
Will the two-eighty-five cover it?
Keeping my fingers crossed.
Cause there's no additional funding planned, so I just wanted to address that.
We're, we'll, we'll, BPW maybe alleviate some of the costs by doing some of the work for site, on-site drainage and that type of work, so that it's not contracted out. And we'd be able to do that stuff in-house and then just contract out the, the work for the ramp and courtyard area instead, so.
So that would basically, the money that we have is that project, so any additional projects, they need additional funding?
And we don't know what we run into when we start getting into this project, right?
No.
We're too scared to dig in.
Yeah, exactly. We do have, I mean, the good part is we do have a sub-drain around the building, so it's just getting down to the existing and seeing what's wrong and probably just adjusting what's wrong with the current, uh, sub-drain system that's already around the foundation, so.
Where's this supposed to drain into? Street?
We think it goes to Fifth Avenue. We think.
Kind of about continental.
Project number five is pavement management. That's the, the three-hundred-and-fifty thousand that's been allocated each year, and that pretty much is the part that, as we talked, that's, that was curb and sidewalks on Central Street, that was, that's chip seal and that's cracked filling, that's, um, paving roads that aren't on the bond. That's any of that type of work.
So currently you have a balance of about six-hundred-and-thirty-three as of today?
Yep.
In that, uh, in that mine, so, uh, I don't know what you're planning to spend through the rest of the year, I'm just letting the council know that there's six-thirty sitting there with the planned three-fifty, uh, for next year.
And so, um, we just, uh, we didn't award, um, bids for chip sealing just came in. So we do have our roads listed for what we want to chip seal, we do want to try and do some crack seal this year. Chip seal, we probably try and do roughly around a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred thousand worth of chip seal. Fifty thousand dollars in crack fill.
And some of that will be in the next two months.
I'm going to try.
Yeah.
I'm going to try.
A little carry, that's why so-
But, uh, you know, um, so we're going to, that's part of it. One of my goals is to Millen overlay Woodruff Ave. From the bridge down to One Way, I do have a proposal for that. I don't want to tell you the number, but we do have a proposal, it's three-hundred-and-thirty thousand to Millen overlay Woodruff Ave. So.
Just that section?
Just that section, so, you know, that's, uh, that's a good chunk of the three-fifty right there.
So just to make a note on this three-fifty, originally when these, when the bonds came out for this, it was recommended that seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand go into this account. I believe that was four years ago, maybe, maybe longer. I only go back to the four-year point. So you literally have taken four-hundred thousand out of this account by going down to the three-fifty. That puts us behind a little bit. When you see a project like this, that's going to take all three-hundred-and-fifty thousand of the money they have, that puts this project behind. As you get behind in these projects, again, I will tell you, the cost per day and the cost per year increases. So there's a lot of costs in the town that you either pay today or pay later, and this is one of those. So, I, it might have been six years ago, so four-hundred thousand at six, you're looking at about a two-point-four million. And my, and, and not everybody's going to agree with this. You'd be two-point-four million behind in road maintenance if you were able to take that money and put it into road maintenance. They face a lot of issues, they face the weather, and they face whether they can get to it and what the emergency side and what they'll have to do. So just to make a note on that.
Project number six is equipment replacement. Our major replacement for this year is to replace, um, our oldest, our oldest brush cutter, which does most of the finished mowing roadside for the, during the summer season. The current brush cutter is a nineteen ninety-five. Board problem with it, we just can't get parts for it anymore. The last transmission we got, that was actually shipped over from England, cause it was the only place we could find the last transmission for this thing, and now the transmission's acting up again, so. It's time, you know, we, we just can't, we just can't double dumb it together anymore. So this would be our major replacement. Yeah. And then on the list is also a new compressor for us to do, um, roadwork, the jackhammering and some other work. The generator light tower is more of, um, we get a major storm, we have an outlined building, pump station that needs any type of generator backup. We can, we'd be able to operate those systems off of this generator, this portable generator, it's a Tovahine. And then it would also have, um, a light tower on it, so if we have any major emergencies that come up, we can set up a light tower, light up the whole area, um, emergency at work. So it's, you know, it's a, it's a safety, it's for safety and it's for, um, if the system goes down and we need backup electric. And then the other one's just, uh, plow replacement, replacing some of our older plows. Oldest one we're going to replace now is a nineteen ninety-seven, and I started here. And then funding for next year, we'd be looking at, um, just, what do I want to tell you with the street sweeper for twenty-twenty-one? I started getting some numbers on a new street sweeper, the last street sweeper we bought was a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. I got, I got numbers yesterday on the same exact model that we purchased three years ago, that a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand is now two-hundred-and-forty thousand. A regenerative air or waterless sweeper is three-hundred thousand. The only good thing about saying going for the gold, for the three-hundred thousand dollar machine, is that those are, um, grant reimbursable for half the cost. So we are going to start plugging into for a grant for a waterless or regenerative air machine, going for the three-hundred thousand dollar street sweeper for the following year out, where our cost would essentially only be the hundred-and-fifty, um, half of the grant. So we are going for that.
Would the mobile generator be grant-worthy?
Possibly, I'd have to look into it. The generator light tower, we're looking at about eight thousand dollars, so I'm not sure, I'd have to look into it, but I will check. Project number seven, given replacement.
So this was changed slightly.
Yeah.
We moved, we moved one of the plows out another year
Yep.
in the manager's request, so for this nineteen, nineteen-twenty year, it's for the standard, a standard plow for about a hundred-and-seventy-five and a pickup truck for sixty-five. But I have a question for you, we have about forty thousand left in the current year.
Forty, forty thousand, how's it going to spend it yet, cause I'm waiting for the release of the new, I can't get pricing on the new vehicle that's supposed to be my new replacement vehicle until today.
Okay.
April twenty-fifth, so.
I knew you were going to spend it, I just didn't know if that was going to be sufficient funds.
So I had to wait till today, which I never even got a chance to contact, so that's on, on my ticket to get pricing for my replacement vehicle. And that expenditure will be done as soon as I have a quote and come to council for it.
I just, you know, I was afraid it was for something that you're going to be more than forty thousand.
No, no, not at all, not at all.
Okay, just checking, I want to make sure you had enough money.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, so this is just for, this is for a replacement, uh, plow standard, one of the big trucks, and, um, and, and another small dump truck. Like you said, the second one would be pushed out a year, I did give you those vehicle replacement schedules, you will see. So in the last three years, from twenty-sixteen till this year, we have had no major, our last major big dump truck replacement was twenty-fifteen. So, uh, what's happening is the big dump trucks are starting to line up all in the same years. So I am pushing them off. You know, at, at the end of the day, I give kudos to my vehicle maintenance staff and my highway division, the maintenance that they do to the vehicles and, and how they take care of them and how we have such a rigorous government maintenance. Because for a town to be able to change out most of its big frontline trucks at eighteen and nineteen years is a feat, and, and we're doing it, and, and our trucks are still top of the line even at the, I'm not saying they're top of the line, but they're still right there at eighteen and nineteen years, and it's unheard of for municipality, so, you know.
I would get complaints, why you guys always ram around these new trucks?
Yeah, they're old trucks.
I know, they're old trucks, you just say they look good.
So, um, you know, that's all, I, um, I'm good with the one new truck replacement, I know which one of them were replaced, that's fine. The other one will be able to get off till next year and, and move on, that's, but they are, they are getting older, and we are trying our hardest to keep them on the roads for when we need them, so. Project number eight's fuel tank replacement, there's no funding for that, the, the only funding that's left is the, the current funding, um, that's still been there.
And that balance is about ninety-nine thousand dollars?
And the, um, and that is for replacement of the, um, piping from the fuel tanks to the island and replacement of the fuel pumps themselves and some upgrades. Um, that should cover that, um, we should be going out to bid, um, over the summer and completing that project.
And that's all done.
And then that project gets completed, yes. But we just, the only reason we haven't completed the project is that the engineer who was in charge of that project got sick, and he's just been in and out, and so we've just kind of like let it lie till he was pulled back in, cause he knew most of the project. But now he's back, and so now we're just kind of getting back on track with it, and we'll finish up that project. Streetlight conversion. That'll happen, I guess, when engineering finishes with the procurement of-
Right, they're, they're having some issues with, uh, the state in agreements with the state with that, so that's just holding that up. John, in engineering, in engineering, uh, town engineering is working on that project.
So once that happens, so I understand, uh, Siemens will be coming in and starting out street, those conversions immediately once the, um, once the final contract is dealt with and signed.
Any questions on, on any of those projects, Captain? So you're the department that, if there is going to be an additional FTE, that I know it comes up, and we've talked about this. So we'll talk about that at the end, we'll see what the cuts are and what the additions are, but I know you've come to this before and asked for that, and-
I have, I, I did, I did ask, um, but not known.
We'll have that conversation, and so why don't you, that's would be a truck driver?
Operator. So should he be able to handle all the equipment? Is it a truck driver?
It'd be a truck, it'd be a truck driver.
And he can operate equipment as well?
So Laura, that, yeah, we, we'll take that one, we'll do it. Not enough cuts yet for us, Mike.
Heard it, heard it.
I did my attention, I know that's the next.
We make it work, we make it work when we're in.
So, right, and the rationale for that is, you know, there is a lot of projects going on, it's arose for many people. The infrastructure was the important thing in town, we had a slower winter this year, but we had a busy winter, you guys are really strapped. I'm aware of that, at least. So, um, so the road bond fund, so we're going to have the four of you-
Okay.
We're about, I had Laura start out, but-
So, uh, basically, uh, the council has authorized, uh, the finance department to go out for five million dollars for road bonds. That is going to happen in May eighth. So we had, going into this year, about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars available- from the old bond. So with the new bond, we have five point, uh, five point eight million dollars. We have already spent about three point eight, so we have two million dollars left of this road bond, um, to be spent, uh, in fall and spring of next year. So, uh, we're right on target for what we plan to spend for the road bond on the projects as we're going through. Uh, let the guys talk about which roads and where and, uh, what, what that two, uh, two million dollars will go for.
So, uh, currently, um, Esher Road, second half of God here, on the second half of Esher Road went down today.
I drove today, it looks pretty, so much better.
I, I got a complaint, somebody called up complaining that it's, it, yeah, people are racing around. When I tell them, I said, I said, I got people complaining that it's the worst road in the world.
But speed kids.
And then you put, you fix it and then they complain that people driving too fast. Give up.
That's such a rude.
You get that water problem solved? What was it?
We're working on that. That's on Saturday. Yes, that's being, that's being dealt with.
Addressed?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good.
Um, so Esher Road right now is our top priority.
We don't.
Um, so that, uh, knock on wood, should be done by Memorial Day and we'll be out of there.
It's time for the, it's time for the summer people to show up and say, what, what's happened to my yard?
Right. Um, so.
Your wife?
Well, uh, once that's done, we weren't sure how the project was going to progress this summer. Um, so I have to, knowing what's going on now, to be able to sit down with De Amber and, and readdress, um, some stuff. We will be able to potentially move into Metatuxit with some, um, of the roads that are on the list there. Um, we're working out some details, um, first circuit drive still, um, you know, the plan's completed, but we're having some, some, some details we need to deal with, some easements there.
Are we finishing phase two B or are we moving into phase three?
We're completing, we're completing phase two.
Correct.
And then, uh, yes, two B, sorry, two B. So two B, yes, is Esher Road, Carver Lane, um, Lambert and Jean was the other person.
I'm sure they were two B.
So, yeah, so when we finish, when we finish, um, Esher Road, we could potentially move to Carver Lane and complete that portion and then, and then move to Metatuxit and start some, um, with some of those roads in Metatuxit that are on the list.
Yeah.
Um, and then with that known now, I'll be able to issue the P O two beta to start the phase three, um, design and permitting. And what we're going to do now for the phase three, so that we didn't have everything, phase two, all the roads were designed and permitted, there's a big package of thirty-five roads. What we've done for phase three is broken up the thirty, thirty to thirty-five roads into like five groups of seven. And so they're going to design those seven, get them right to permitting, get it out quicker and we can get those seven roads constructed. Um, and so, and, and as those seven are in permitting, they'll start designing on the next seven and then get those to permitting. And so we'll always have a little bit of a constant of roads coming back. Instead of just kind of sitting dormant, waiting for a big package of thirty-five all at once. So we kind of sat down and brainstormed a little bit and said, you know, if we break this up when we do this, it'll constantly be moving in and out. So that's how we're going.
And that's why there was that gap, so everyone understands phase two A, there was an extensive error and problems. So that's why for a while, nothing was getting done, but it was, people were doing things, but they were being done behind the scenes.
Right, so hopefully this will speed up the process and we'll always have something going on, you know, where, where we can probably do a small batch in the spring and then do a, and then kind of take the summer off so we're not, um, disrupt, so disruptive in town with everything that's going on and then move back in the fall and do a, plus another small batch and then have another small batch in the spring again and, and we won't be as disruptive throughout the summer.
So Mike, are we still at roughly a million dollars a mile to do a road?
Pretty much.
Just so people understand, it's a million dollars a mile, basically, to do a road. So two million dollars will do two miles roughly. Um, just so Mike will explain it quick because I know it's out there, South Pier Road is a different project, isn't it?
Yeah. South Pier Road is, is the tip project, but, um, the way I, the way that, that South Pier Road was, was allocated to the state was for the town to handle the whole project itself. So essentially what we'll end up doing is, um, doing the reconstruction of the sidewalks and roadway of South Pier Road and paying for the project. And essentially what will happen is we'll do the project, I think it's roughly about one to one point to one point five million. We'll do the project, pay for it out of the bond funds and then the state reimburses us. Um, essentially that's how we did the Metatuxit, um, stormwater project. That was a one point three million dollar project, came out of the bond, paid for the one point three, but then we reimbursed the fifty percent, um, back to the project from the state. So essentially it'll work the same way. We'll do the, we'll do, the town will administer the project for, for South Pier Road so we can probably get it done at, at phase three.
Yeah, that's part of phase three.
So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything.
Thank you.
So we're a part of that. And finance department.
That's you.
I do.
No, it's your budget. I'm going to yell from here. Yeah. It's not good.
I can do what I can do.
She's leaving me out already.
Okay, so the finance department is comprised of, oh, that's on page eighteen, she's only leading nine.
I, I'm sorry.
Uh, pretty much four divisions, finance, accounting, the tax assessors and tax collections. Um, finance really has, um, budget control over each department and access A G C for talent accountants except for the screen department. We maintain custody and fiduciary responsibility of all the investments, including pension and bond, uh, paying off debt service and responsible for the disbursement of all the monies and control of the expenditures. The finance office has three F T Es, the finance director, purchasing manager and one clerical clerk. And, uh, so that we can go right to the budget. Basically, as everyone else, the salary benefits are all contractual. Uh, we have, in this budget and, oh, you'll see in the accounting budget, uh, a strong component of, uh, professional development. So we've added purchase service, professional meetings and, um, P B, because we have really, we're going to have really new people. I'm new, haven't had professional training in the software, the payroll, H R system and the, uh, financial system. While we're using it, it's, we need to bring it to its fullest potential, which we don't use it that way right now. There's many more things we can do with it.
Financial system?
Um, so there would be myself, um, the payroll clerk, the new controller and then the halftime controller that we're going to use for the tax collection, that position, um, to help with, uh, inputting data properly to bring up this, uh, system so we can, uh, bring up the employee self-service portion of the system where employees going and they change their own information, they change their W fours, they can change their address, they can do direct deposit forms, they can check their pay stubs, W twos, change benefits, all on their own. They just go in and, yeah, it really will save a lot of paperwork, um, the special action forms that we can do instead of passing around paper to everybody. Um, so there's a lot of benefits that can come out of getting the C D, uh, out there to everybody who uses this M U N S, any John payroll. You just need to get all the information in the system first. Kind of worked with I T, I'm getting that moving along also. We've talked about this a lot. Um, so that's, that's the, uh, increases in the finance and also the accounting budget. Uh, then there's a little bit in equipment, the desk chairs, um, a double monitor and a scanner to bring us also up to the twenty-first century, scan in documents instead of having file cabinets. We've started that with, uh, we do that with accounts payable. Uh, we started that with, um, the accounts receivable clerk and now we're starting payroll. So if you want to go right into the accounting, that has four people, four F T Es, the controller and three clerical, accounts receivable, accounts payable and payroll. And in the accounting office, that's where they put, um, the Tyler, the M U N S system, they have this program called PACE and it, it pretty much keeps your system up to date and makes sure you're using it properly. So we're going to have, we just upgraded to the new version, eleven-three last month. And now, uh, we get a free assessment of our system. So they come in, do a two-day overview of our system, what we're using, what we're not using, what we're using incorrectly or could be doing better. So that's really going to be helpful to kick off this whole, getting the system up to speed. Um, and then when you join this PACE program, it's fifty-eight hundred dollars annually, you get five days of training. That could be ten half-day trainings, five full-day trainings onsite or a webinar, but you can set it up for whatever you need. Um, and then you get, uh, three people for conference passes, those run about twelve hundred for registration, so we get three free per year. So if I T needs to go, anybody in finance needs to go, accounting, all the different, you know, modules they can do. Um, and I think that would be it. Same thing, it's just all pile of conference. Oh, and then we get another free assessment every three years after you're in this PACE program. You get one more system assessment. So we would get one this July and then we'll implement everything they suggest and then in two years you could get another one to see how we're doing. And, um, and they call it, and there's also salary and budget projections. So while now, uh, everything's done in Excel spreadsheet mostly, you can run salary projection, projection and budget projections every day, many versions. Put this back in, take that back out, move this here, move that there. It's really streamlined, just to have all the personnel data in there to do this and get position control in there correctly. Um, that's it for those two. I don't know if you have any questions on that stuff, right? Okay. The next one is the tax collector, which is the three F T Es and, um, is the tax collector, two clerical staff and one of the staff clerks is the fifty percent finance, which we plan on using a lot as soon as all positions get filled, we'll stop training with that personnel.
Yeah, so that floating is important because there's certain tasks in that department that we're busy at certain times of year and less busy at others, so we really need to focus on those folder, yeah, those folder positions.
Right, and she'll actually be, are you filling in?
Private sector principles that we can.
She'll be back, she'll be filling in for, um, somebody that's going to be on vacation. So she'll be doing the closet. So we've already started to.
We can work each other's job.
Cross-training, yeah, backup payroll would be wonderful because she's married to the desk. She can't be out ever on Monday. Well, she can, but then I have to do it. Um, and then lastly is the tax assessor, which is also three F T Es, is, um, the tax assessor, like, um, and two clerical staff, one is kind of like an assistant. And the big thing that, um, he has asked and requested is in conjunction with the G I S mapping system that might, that's going on. So when we were talking the other night, there was, uh, he was only looking at about thirty-five thousand of the eighty-four that was left for that project. Um, so I did talk with Dave today and, um, you could, I could earmark the twelve, there's twelve thousand nine hundred dollars on page twenty-five that he needs to put them, um, treats and bounds on the maps because those were, um, those are now added into the original G I S information. So we, we can just add another layer to the maps that are already there and we get the boundaries on there. And then, uh, it's the fifty-four hundred to, uh, scan the maps and cards, the data online in digital form, so they're on paper. So we can make that part of the G I S project that's already out there. So taking out of this budget.
Taking out of this budget, the twelve-nine and, and add it to the G I S balance.
And the benchmarks as an overlay.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, correct. Yes, and then, um, they need a new copier also, it's been a while since they've had a copier, so the assessors and collection are going to chip in to get a new copier.
Any questions on any of those four subparts of finance? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yay.
Nice job.
Thank you. She's, I have to say, she's, she's been a great asset, um, in the finance department for the last year, bringing in electronic, online, uh, paper lists, uh, A C H payments, uh, online banking. Uh, she's been fabulous for streamlining what we do on paper and bringing it, um, up to date, uh, taking us out of old, old school ways of doing things and it's been marvelous. I just want to commend her for that work.
Yeah, we're starting A C H debits.
We're second on that.
Yeah.
The A C H debits for the taxpayer bill, so we, we're going out, the effect form is just approved, so.
Right, so one of the things we've been trying to do is, everybody says, how can I pay for my taxes online? Well, there was always a fee. Now we can pull it A C H, so there are forms if, if people want to now, uh, have us pull it from, like you would on any other bill, we'll pull it and, uh, we'll pick, we'll take quarterly or annually, so that's a.
This is a live.
She just put in.
Yeah, Chris. I'm all about streamline.
You get, Dan is applauding back there.
So I don't know where you want to go from here, we're kind of starting to wrap things up a little bit. Um, we can go through the general revenue, which is the first three pages, or we can step back, leave that to the end. Uh, we can talk about debt service and transfers or pension and O P A.
How do you do debt service and transfers, pension and O P A?
Okay.
Along with the revenue thing, because you'd be able to see if there's any changes for that investment?
Yes, that was kind of my thought here. Uh, sixty-five debt service? Debt service is sixty-five for the pension. So, uh, basically.
How do you just walk through it very much, so it's a summary at some stage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so transfers, uh, are basically the things that we, uh, take general fund money and we've already talked about. Uh, the school transfer is there, uh, at the twenty-six, three eighty-four, two eighty-nine. Um, honestly, I believe that's a couple, uh, maybe twenty thousand dollars short, I don't have the number written in front of me, um, from what the school requested of the town, I can check that after I, I talk. The debt service fund is, uh, now includes, it's a transfer, we can talk about it, but it will include the road bond fund principal and interest payment next year, that's the new debt service that, uh, why there's an increase in debt service next year. Uh, our capital transfer will be contingent on, on what we decide our capital, um, budget is going to be. Uh, we've already talked about middle bridge, retained claims is twelve thousand dollars, we just basically put it aside, uh, every year and it is spent, uh, towards little claims that the town has. We just put it in a special revenue, uh, to keep track of it that way. Uh, we have the library transfer, which we've already talked about, that, that is the maintenance of effort of eight hundred and forty-one. We also budget fifty thousand dollars to the, uh, land conservancy every year. Now we can talk about pensions. So there is a transfer to the sixteen sixty-six pension fund of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
I have one question, for, for actual, for, for two thousand nineteen, for the land trust, is thirty-seven-five?
We, we do it monthly.
Okay.
We transfer monthly.
Gotcha, okay.
Um, that's why you will. That's why you will also see, like, the pension fund, it's a monthly transfer.
Thank you.
Same thing with school, we, we just do a monthly journal entry. So the 1666 pension, that $267,000 is that closed policed pension, that is 100% of the annual determined contribution, and there's about $1.1 million in liability left in that fund. It's underfunded as far as the state goes for being 80% funded to keep you out of critical, it is still in critical status, but they're very comfortable as it's a closed plan that we just keep putting this $267,000 aside. So even though it's in critical status, we're in compliance with the state funding improvement plan. OPEB, so originally I had a higher number in OPEB for a transfer, I was able to get the 30-year projection out of Nihart, so the annual determined contribution for OPEB is 3.3 million dollars overall. This is just the general fund contribution of 3.2, the other comes from your enterprise funds or your special revenues. The towers for 50,000, we have reduced to zero as they're not going to request that money. And there is $150,000 we set aside as a reserve for retirements when we have to pay out their sick and door vacation time. This is a reserve as we don't know which departments it would fall into. The next page, we're going into, any questions on any of those transfers? I'll talk about the pension fund itself, it is broken out in each individual department, and we are going to be contributing 4.6 million dollars out of the general fund budget. And again, we're, we are planning to put in 100% of the annual determined contribution, but it is distributed by department, so you don't see it as a one, one-time transfer. Going into the next page of town, townwide expenditures, but these are items that we don't break out by individual departments, for example, workers' comp, unemployment, the contract services here is four, I'm trying to remember. It might be the televised council meeting. General insurance that has come down budget by budget as we talked about, doing it by value of property as opposed to a percentage of budget, so we were able to reduce the burden on the general fund by making that change in calculation. There's $17,000 set aside for, we call it affordable care, it's if somebody goes from, is now entitled to health care that we didn't anticipate, that's 17,000. And the supersite is our landfill liability that we pay every year. Any questions, say. The next page is our contingency fund, which basically we put $300,000 aside for contingency. And if either the retirement of 150, the affordable care of the 17, or the 300 do not get used, then it just falls to fund balance at the end of the fiscal year.
You referenced the pension line, but the pension line is actually later in the thing, right?
Well, I can go through the whole pension-
No, 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 what's the total number though, again? Is it 6.46?
Well, it's out of the, it's 4.6 out of the general fund, it's about 500,000 out of our wastewater and enterprise funds and library. So we're putting in about 4.9 million dollars from, from the town as a whole, the school is another 1.1. So it's $6 million.
Okay, so maybe we could go over the things from the three days that we, that were cut or added.
Okay.
Then we'll do that first.
I have the recap.
Then we'll take, then we'll go through what's open, and maybe take a break so you can, you can kind of, literally can think about what they want to prioritize and go from there, so.
Okay, so basically, we started our workshops two days ago at 61.6 million dollars, right now we're down to 61.2 million dollars. Where it had come from is I made the adjustments to health and dental, that is about $95,000. It was dental of 10 and health of about 85, that was because I got the new premium numbers. Work-related injury for public safety, actually their premiums decreased, so that was a savings of $12,000. The OPEB adjustment that I talked about ended up being about $260,000 in the general fund. Now, these are things that the council has worked on. So the rental registration proposed fee increase added $41,250. The towers giving us ba, are not requesting the capital transfer was 50. However, now I'm going to start using some of that money. The police and fire wages, when I was going through the budget and Chris was looking to July, the bump at, as of July, June 30th, I missed, and that totaled between the two about $65,000. But the other thing we have included is the museum, $1,000 to South County Museum. So right now, our budget is at 61,187, 61,187,000. Want to go on to what we-
And then let's go over what is, so, yeah, you know-
Kind of pending?
We're not, the ones that we kind of said we're going to talk about still.
So we still have, what I have from the other night as, as a refresher was the building, building permit fee increase, which you would, you still, you know, can talk about. And then the other item was the IT, you had asked me to put IT back down.
Capital IT number four.
Correct.
It was 10,000 per year, yeah?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the items that we talked about today.
Then the GIS mapping, should we agree to that?
Yes, if you would like to agree to moving that 12 out, yes.
So that's a zero sum gain though, right? That 12 goes from community development?
No.
It goes-
So 12, 9 would come out of the assessor's office, period, so we're going to add that back into the, reduce the general fund by 12,900. The funding is already in capital as a prior year balance.
So it's not a savings?
It is a savings of 12,900.
And that's coming out of finance?
Yes.
You had said there was an increase of 20,000 across fire, but you've already done that?
That's all, that's all in this number?
So then we get to the discussion of, so the other open pieces are the whole George C., Pickleball, Clark Road, that, there's that park number four, park number five.
Four, seven, eight, and nine I have written down.
But eight we resolved, we said we were going to put 320 in.
But you still need 80.
Still need 80, okay. Okay, so those are open, additional FTE for DPW, that's open, that conversation if people want to have it.
And that's, I did a quick estimate of what that'd be, that's $100,000.
And then capital fire, number six, was the north station, be 65,000, we talked, that was-
Oh, I didn't have that note, I did not have that note, I'm sorry.
All right. All right, so anyone want to take a break? If you want to compile, you have that list, think about what you want to do. And then you'll talk about school allocation, pension allocation and all that stuff.
So I will also, I can also tell you where you sit now in relationship.
Yes, that'd be great, yes.
Do you want to do that right now?
Yes, please, yeah.
So basically, I have the tax levy, the levy would be at 4%, however, I had tried to get it down, but we are still at $10.30 for our tax rate. I was hoping to have, so that's 3.4%. If you want to bring that down a percentage or a penny, you know, it's about $51,000 has to be cut for every pen, every penny on the taxes. So if you want to bring it down to a 3% range, which is $10.26, you need to cut another $150,000 before we even talk. The fund balance right now sits at about 12% unassigned fund balance to budget, which is right where we need to be, looking forward to next year, which would require the use of fund balance of 1.6 to keep us within the 10% going out in two years. I do not see a large surplus coming from the town this year at June 30, just to mention that, because a lot of times we would end up the year somewhere between 500 and a million dollars. I do not see that happening, so I do not see a replenishment of the fund balance coming out of operations as of June 30, 2019.
So you give your chance to everyone to tell what their priorities, what they want to add.
Correct.
And then we go to our school allocation, kind of those big pictures, the pension allocation.
And a pension is that a, I've always made my fight for funding 100% of the pension.
So five minutes, everybody.
Yeah.
The Taliban.
They're bad.
He's trying to, people are missing.
Like hailing other something.
All right, I get a final.
Thank you.
Maybe next one.
Yeah, I actually, for early adopter, I made Louis.
I mean, he loves it.
So we're just, 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 we're
I know. Who is this? Why, he looks a child. What is that? He hasn't been about once.
It has to be one.
That's true. Did he get this?
No.
I think he got.
Yeah, yeah.
If you can't offset that, if you can't offset that. Let, let. And allocation. It may come out in the morning. That's.
But we already. Talking about thirty cents.
Be last one shot. When it resets.
I'm writing this right now. Fire. But it'll only be.
That was interesting. That was interesting. All right, so we're at the three point four increase, but the levy is at four.
Right, there is no.
Don't have a lot of room. So if we add things, you have to cut down. So what we're gonna do is I'm gonna let Laura go with what was open in capital and operating, and we'll talk about each of those. And then we'll talk about the bigger allocations.
Okay, so going back, it was most, all of these. I'll start with the one that's not capital. How's that? So the first one that is not capital is the DPW extra person in the estimated amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so on that one there, if we do a higher November, December, we could get away with a half a year, higher.
If it's December thirty, I mean, it depends on how many months. It'd just take November, December.
Maybe just have like six months.
Yeah, so it'd be fifty if you went halfway through the year.
About a part-time employee.
Part-time doesn't work. For me, it does.
So it'd be January first.
Okay.
If that's the.
If it was half.
Right.
Do you want to run through all of them?
Yeah, sure, okay. So.
That's fifty thousand.
That's if that, okay. All right. Frank Keenote.
Yeah.
So in capital.
Yeah.
We'll start with, just because of the way it was, the IT, the ten thousand dollars, which was in his budget as the reserve for any computer that died. So that's.
That's ten thousand dollars, IT number four. All right, so we'll just go through them and then come back.
That's fine. Fire, number six was brought up, which is the repairs to the station. There's already twenty nine set aside, even though it looked like it was sixty five. We're actually only talking about thirty six thousand of new money. Now we're into the park and rec. So park and rec number four for the courts, they, he needed an additional forty thousand dollars. Number seven was the fencing, ten thousand dollars. Number eight was the building repairs to the community center. Even though we transferred a hundred and sixty, he is still eighty thousand dollars additional funding. And then number nine is a hundred and twenty five thousand for the camp renovations.
Can you do that one more time?
Yes. Courts forty, fencing ten, community center eighty, camp one twenty five. The only revenue source that we have pending is the possibility of the building permits between, what did I say, thirty? Thirty five to forty. But I would, I guess I would caution that I don't know when it could be implemented. That would be a July first implementation. And secondly, we believe that the state will impose that we go back to basically the same revenue as we're collecting now, July of two thousand twenty.
So there may not be much game there.
So it'd be a one-time game.
Is that your last one?
The building permit game.
Yeah, so are we okay because of what we talked about yesterday, not doing the building?
Right. Sorry, was there any additional research done on that? New regulation, the new state level?
I, that will be a solicitor call, but even, even still, I mean, it'd be your option as to, it would be probably a one-time revenue source.
Sorry, well, the way it was mentioned, whatever that was, was that last night?
Yes. I know.
It sounded like it was one employee from that department said that that was what she had heard. Right, isn't that the?
No, 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 no. That's, that's who told me, but that wasn't it at all. She, she is, has been told that the state fee, they were given an extension to implement the e-permitting fees that the state had until July of two thousand twenty. So we're in this grace period for a year. And I asked, well, what are the state fees? And she said, well, basically, it's bringing us back to the revenue that we are currently sitting at. So we're in a grace period. So it appears that if we were to change, we can, but we'd be going back to what the state fees are.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I understood the concept. I just wasn't clear on if this was intended or if this was.
They have been, building, the building office has, building inspector's office has been told that we have to implement the state fees. If you want to fight that, that is a policy decision to go to the state and say, we don't want to abide by your fees.
So based on that, the state fees, it sounds like we're gonna just, we're not gonna.
For the difference.
Right, it's not worth the time we actually.
I guess I missed it, but it sounds, I missed last night, but it sounds like we wanted to adjust the fees and we can't because the state, some kind of statement.
But the other side of this is that you can still bring it up. We're only talking budget. We're talking budget, and if for some reason something changes, of course, you have the opportunity to change your policy for fees and allow that revenue to come into the town at any given point in a year. This is just a budget, it's not a set in stone plan.
Whatever the easier.
Okay, so then the pension and OPEP contributions, you have, anybody want to talk about that?
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
Thank you.
If anything, we should add, add the five cents of our levy and do it.
We can add, we can add to our levy. We're at the top.
We're at the top.
We're at the top. We, we are maxed at our tax revenue right now.
We're at four.
We're at four on the levy, which is three point four on the tax rate.
So then contingencies at three hundred, it's traditionally at three hundred, and that's worth four, so does anyone, everyone come to a? And then we have the allocations to library and school.
Library and school, and I was, as I mentioned, in the budget, we are twenty one thousand short of what the school requested because I did not change the manager's budget to what this, this school public hearing was after. So we would need to increase the budget by twenty one thousand dollars.
And that's an increase we gotta write?
Increase, the, the school budget by twenty one thousand, it's changed.
What was your request again?
Done, I have it. I have it, I pulled it out. So the, actually, the increase is twenty one thousand nineteen dollars. Their request is four. Their, their increase would be three hundred fifty eight thousand, four hundred ninety five over this year. So it's twenty six million, four oh five, three oh eight.
So the total school allocation is what now with the twenty one?
What's their request?
Yeah, three.
Is the twenty six million?
No, I know, no, but it's, the increase from last year.
Three fifty eight, four ninety five.
Twenty one thousand short. All we gotta do is come up two more students, now I'm bringing twenty five.
No, that's ours budget to their number. Our budget doesn't match their request, is what I'm.
Right, understood. So the twenty one thousand is in the three fifty eight or no?
Yeah, that's a different number. It's, my twenty one thousand is just, I don't have the twenty six thousand, four oh five in.
Right, and so what are people's thoughts on that? We had a public hearing on the budget for the school.
I'm confident they're gonna get students next year, they're gonna make it up.
I am as well.
Because South Kingston is in disarray. It's like rats jumping off your ship. They're gonna send them here.
So we're, you're okay with their price?
Nah, I'm okay, you know.
Twenty thousand.
Yeah, I mean, nah, I think they'll make it up in their enrollment next year.
So what do you want to give them for now? What do you want to, this, do I, what is it? They requested allocation.
Their current?
Their request.
Three fifty eight.
Right. And we have, and we, right now, we're on the books for twenty thousand less, right?
Yeah, so we're on the books for three hundred and thirty seven.
Yeah. I think they're gonna make it up.
Oh, I know what you mean, okay. So don't do the increase, okay, Jesse.
No, we're saying do the increase.
I said, don't do the increase, but I think they're gonna make it.
He doesn't want to do the issue twenty one.
I think they're, I think they're gonna do it.
Since we spoke to them, they want twenty one more, he's saying that.
No, 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 oh, okay, I guess I, I understand what you're saying. I, mine is more, it was just a budgetary.
Right, right.
I didn't change the budget.
Right, right.
Wait, oh, so it's, it's not them asking for twenty one beyond?
No, it was my budget, right, I didn't change the manager's request. They didn't ask for an additional twenty one after they came. It's just that I never changed the manager's request.
So it should have been, the, the request should have been three fifty eight, four ninety five.
Okay.
Just a year.
So, okay.
Just a year. I mean, that's not a lot, I mean, remember, two years ago, it was what? It was like nine hundred thousand they were requesting.
Maintenance of effort, they have a statute that creates it, that has a formula that.
That's a different number.
And we had that discussion four, four years ago, and it was great fun. The, the, okay, so how is, so the school allocation, we're fine with?
We need to fund school.
Yeah, we need to fund that.
All right, so then you have the library allocation, which is an eight forty one.
So same as it's been for.
Ten years?
Yeah. I'm not sure, Laura, do you have the history of how long it's been that number for the library allocation? Five years?
I do not have that, I'm.
Okay.
It goes back.
It went back and forth, well, I've been here five, I've been here five years. And one year, we gave them the extra fifty for capital, which is still sitting in their capital reserve. So it did go up to eight ninety one in that year, but then it went back down to the eight forty one.
Okay, got it. Well, they're not asking for any increase, though.
No statutory formula, though, for theirs, to say, for the eight forty one, for the.
We have to fund, we, we have to fund, level fund. That's.
A state mandate.
The state.
That's not what the state statute says.
I'm not getting into.
Right, okay. It's not a formula like for the school, it's not the same thing. So we have a.
No, it's not like a maintenance of effort with the school, if you drop enrollments, you know, you can not contribute as much.
You also have to increase your maintenance of effort if there's an increase in enrollment.
In schools, yes. This is just level, you have to level fund.
But that's not what the statute says. To get the state aid.
To get the state aid, yeah, yeah.
Right, exactly, which the state aid was one eighty. But there's a fund balance of six eighty. So what's the fund balance? What is, what are people's thoughts on that? You want to, you want to do eight forty one? Eight forty one?
All right, so the budget for the library is a million twenty eight, five ninety seven with a state aid.
I will probably check. Forty two?
Forty two. But you, now just reserve that situation when you come to that. I don't have that page. You need to break out. You know, I'll let you, I will.
So they have a fund balance of six eighty six, four forty three. You want to give them eight forty one, one oh three, and bring up their total to one point five, two seven, five forty six?
You're gonna get them the same budget they have the last five years.
But you want to bring up their amount of money that they'll have to one point five.
No, it's an operating budget.
Still, you, this is, once that money goes in there, it's theirs. We don't have any control over them.
That's right.
They can do what they want.
And that's, that's what they used to operate.
Well, they haven't used it if they've got six hundred and eighty six, four forty three in the budget right now. So in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen, they had three hundred and twenty one thousand, six hundred and eighty two in the fund balance. In two thousand sixteen, they had five hundred and ninety six, two hundred and eighty five in the fund balance. So they're not using that money.
You don't know where other revenue is coming from?
I'm just saying, they're not, this is in their fund balance. We have to budget.
It's not all from that operate, it's not all from that transfer.
We have to budget their, it is.
You don't think they generated revenue?
They, they generate some revenue.
They have to generate some.
No way they know.
There's no way, how do we know how much they generate?
So their fund balance of six eighty six.
Right, their fund balance is six eighty six.
Unlike the Kenny Bunsen fund balance, that is just.
So their budget is a million twenty eight, five ninety seven. They have six eighty six, four forty three. If you take the six eighty six, four forty three from the one million twenty eight, five ninety seven, it leaves three hundred and forty two thousand, one hundred and fifty four. If you take the million twenty eight, five ninety seven, which is their budget, is which they get funded every year. You take the six eighty six, you add four hundred thousand to it, they have more than their budget.
And what do you want to do?
Well, my feeling is this, taxpayers are giving money to this, to library. Comes out of the taxpayer money. I don't think anybody should be able to build up a piggy bank and do what they want with it. These are, this is taxpayer dollars. We have families in this town that are on the edge, and I don't believe that we should be asking those taxpayers to overfund a budget where you can take money, put it aside, and do what you wish with it. This is not how this town should be operating.
All right, so they had, they had seven oh nine, they had seven hundred and nine thousand dollars last year. Then it went down to six eighty six, and it's gonna go down another seventy seven thousand. They're actually spending from their reserve now. So it's not going up, and they're paying for the pension that you guys won't give to the two employees that deserve it. So it's going down.
So we need to see.
And it's weird that all of a sudden, all of a sudden, this year, let's cut the budget. Why, why would that happen?
We need to cut the budget.
It's going down, it's crazy.
But it's six eighty six, this is where the fund balance of.
And if you cut more off the transfer, it's gonna go down more. So you want to get the reserve down to nothing?
That's what we did, the school, when the school athletic field, the school athletic field, the, the fund balance of the school paid the athletic field because there's one point eight in borrowing, and there was money coming out of the school budget. That's how the school fund, because the school fund balance is inaccessible. And so now it's a much smaller fund balance.
So the one year where you decide to sell the downtown building, is the same year you're gonna cut the budget? Just a coincidence?
Well, we've given them enough money to carry their budget.
Because we've always had. Because we've always had the assumption it was maintenance of effort.
It's a budget thing.
We looked at maintenance of effort, right, I looked at the statute.
You should be ashamed of yourself.
It's not socialism, it's not socialism.
Socialism.
That's what you're all about.
Should be ashamed if we don't use the money to make the building.
I'm not socialist.
Yeah, that's where you are.
I'm a socialist?
So let's, Jill, let's see what Jill, let's see what Jill's thought, we get those opinions, we get it. So what is...
I didn't say anything, that's his opinion.
Jill hasn't spoken, I wanna hear what she has to say.
Okay, so, so we've looked at the, at the health of all the town departments, the school committee, the school department, and now we're looking at the library. They do have a surplus, we, we were just gonna get aware of this, it's a very high surplus. I agree with Rick that that money should be used to operate the library. I do wanna make sure that they had a, a huge increase with insurance. I think that we should add additional money to cover that insurance, that, that part, that was a surprise for them. But, but I agree with Rick, we have to use that, that, that fund balance they have and fund them to where they're, they could be at, and I agree, you have to use that money.
So would it be a proposal of an allocation of, is it, you were saying, four hundred?
You could allocate three forty-two, one fifty-four, but I'm willing to go four hundred because they have an insurance increase in their budget, okay, it was an insurance increase.
All right, so it'd be an allocation of four hundred thousand to the library instead of the eight forty-one?
Unbelievable. You're gonna cut half their budget, you're cutting half their transfer right now.
They still have the budget.
You're cutting half their yearly transfer right now?
That's not my call, but I can't speak.
They have a million two eight five ninety-seven, that's what they want with their cost.
So there's no maintenance of effort?
Well, here's the problem.
We've always, I told that, but we looked at the statute, the statute doesn't have a formula for maintenance of effort. We looked at it, there's no, and so there's six eighty-six that's sitting there, just like, just like we sort of...
I get, I get it, I get it, I get six eighty-six on this off the sideline, I get that. Laura, is there a maintenance of effort, yes or no?
There, you, the state law says you have to fund the same level as the prior year to receive state reimbursement.
So if we don't go with the eight change, we don't go with the eight change, we won't get the state funding.
I can't answer that, that is a legal question, and it's an honest question.
We should wait until we get a legal answer before we start taking the scissors to their budget.
The statute says it right here, it's, the general law is twenty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty.
Well, Matt, you know what, I know you're an attorney, but, you know, I'd like another opinion on this. Before, you know, I mean, it's bad enough, we violated the, the people's bond, and we bought a building that we're sitting on, speaking of bonds, does that have any effect on our bonds? Because we're sitting on this building, the Belmont.
Not currently.
What's the timetable on that to where it will start affecting our bond rating?
In about a year.
About a year, okay. Is there any projections on that?
Yeah, we're gonna sell the building, we're gonna sell the...
It's a bad purchase.
We didn't have the money.
Well, you didn't have money, look at the, look at the, look at the budget the way it is.
The two forty-eight million dollar hole in the budget.
Where you gonna, where you gonna...
We're trying to stop the bleeding.
Where you gonna put the five or six hundred thousand into that, in here? It's not there.
Remember when you said you supported libraries?
I do, I support libraries.
You're cutting their budget in half.
I support the best library that the taxpayers can afford, Jesse. That's why I said it, you should resign.
This is, you guys, this is a budgetary conversation. You say you support libraries, you cut half the budget, you lied to everyone.
Okay, once the consensus on the four hundred...
Why are you taking directions from your mom?
I'm taking directions.
Why you...
So let's, let's take a vote on that.
What do people feel about the four hundred thousand allocation?
I'm really for it.
I'm with it.
I'm with it. You two are against it, okay, so it's a four hundred thousand allocation to the library.
Would you say, Josh? Would you use the...
Use the...
Personal attacks, here they are.
Yeah, you're done. Yeah, you're done, what are you talking about?
Yeah, you're done.
Please.
All right, everybody, so we could look at...
This is a building, how many people a day, going two hundred, three hundred a day? And we're cutting the funding, and we're not...
We're gonna look at...
This is a tragedy.
We have additions and subtractions to the budget.
You're correct, Matt, you did turn this whole library question into a disaster, congratulations.
So if you wanna look at... Five. Okay, so we have the capital...
I must've gone, I went a while ago, I'm falling asleep.
Capital Park number four is the forty thousand dollars for George C. and Hill Street and Clark Boulevard.
I'm for all those things, I think the rectitude is...
Okay, so we're gonna add that forty thousand on Capital Park number four. Some to four would be nice, wouldn't you two?
Really?
Capital Park number seven, ten thousand. This is for the decrease, no, fencing.
Yes.
Yes. Capital Park number eight, this is another eighty thousand to the community center.
Yes.
Yes.
Reluctantly, yes, okay. Capital Park number nine, this is the camp renovations to Clark Road.
I just have to still say no for that.
So that, I mean, I'd like to move along with that, I sit on the rect advisory board, that building's been sitting there, but again...
You could split it, you could put sixty-five, and if you wanted, over two years, like, if that's an option. But right now, I don't think there's support for it. Capital Park number nine, Laura.
Hi.
I'll go through him.
Thank you, I'm like, trying to figure out the other, other side of it, so, that's all.
Sixty-five split is fine, but...
How are you with that?
I'll go sixty-five split.
Sixty-five split, do you get that, Steve, so it'd be sixty-five and then sixty?
So this year, sixty-five? Okay.
All right, and we've agreed to the school allocation already.
Yes.
The twenty-one thousand. Subtractions is IT Capital number four, is Dan still here? It's ten thousand, we can leave it, I mean, I...
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Fire Capital number six, that's fixes to the roof at the, the north firehouse. It's not a sixty-five thousand dollar savings sign, finally, I think it's a six.
We need the roof removed.
Are you guys fine with that?
Yes. So we're not changing that, that's not new funding, it's not cutting.
If you have any questions, we can go through and then see what...
Because he can use his computer.
Is it this time?
The only thing we're talking about is the DPDW.
And there was a sixty-five thousand police and fire?
No, that's all, all in there.
That's all set, okay.
Yeah, that was thirty-six. So, so is the DPDW worker, what's people's thoughts on that?
It sounds like they're gonna be so busy this year that they're gonna need extra help. I mean, they have all these roads that people, roadblocks work.
I think if we do that half...
So it would be fifty thousand, Laura, to add that worker as of January first? And then we have to spread across salary and pension.
That's it. So that's two sixty-six out of the four forty-one, one oh three that was cut. Does that sound a bell break?
Because we're leaving, the subtractions didn't happen, right, the IT number four, Fire Cap, so that's not touched.
Right, so I'm adding it up again, so it's forty for the courts, ten for the fencing, eighty for the building, sixty-five for the camp, fifty for DPDW, and twenty-one for the school, right? It's two sixty-six. The allocation to the library was set at eight forty-one, one oh three, and you have made it four hundred thousand?
Yes.
So that is a, a cut of four forty-one, one oh three. So four forty-one, one oh three minus the two sixty-six is one seventy-five, one oh three that we now have to determine use or reduce taxes or reduce fund balance.
I think if we could split it, that would probably be the best, I'd love to put all the taxes, but...
Or, or pensions.
Right, I think we could, well, pension is a hundred thousand.
Oh, we have another twelve-nine, sorry, we need a twelve-nine assessor, so, good catch. That's why she's the new finance director. This one's just apparently burnt out, so there we go. One eighty-eight oh oh three. Hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
So we alleviate fund, we take half to fund balance and half to the tax decrease.
Okay.
That's not good?
What's good?
Of the one eighty-eight oh oh three. All right, so everybody, then that will be, Laura, we'll put that together for the public hearing on the budget, which we'll have on May sixth, that's the, it's the second one, right, Terry? Second public hearing on the budget.
That's correct.
Right, that's the second public hearing on the budget.
Will you still be wanting the work session with the school committee?
Give me one second, probably not. The, so with that split, then we're going to about a three point two tax increase, and you're taking one point four out of fund balance, roughly, where's that?
Oh, okay, so we're taking, let's say it's nine, let's say it's ninety-nine, ninety-five, right? And that's one ninety, ninety-five out of each. So it's ninety-five out of each, so I'm using one point six, so I'd be using about one point five from fund balance.
One point five million.
Of fund balance, and the tax rate at that would probably bring it down another two cents.
Good.
So, so that would bring it down to ten twenty-eight, so, you know, it's still over three?
Still over three, low three.
Low three.
I don't think we need, I mean, with school committee, because we didn't change their allocation, so usually there's a conversation, like, we're in a maintenance of effort, it's a detailed conversation, or when there's a change or a good level of funding, but that's not what happens. So I think if there's, council's okay, I think we can cancel, so Terry can, I don't know if that's been posted even yet.
I just posted it, but they've been waiting to hear that, so we can...
They can cancel that, yeah, that's Monday night, so there will not be a work session with the school committee Monday night. And again, May sixth, public hearing on the budget, so thank you, everybody, thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Sean, thank you, and thank you, everyone, and we'll, that concludes the work session, thank you very much.
Steve, one of the dogs is not allowed on the beach anymore, or is it the fifteenth of May? The dogs are on the beach, when is it not allowed on the fifteenth of May? Wait. Just better tell the dogs.
April twenty is probably, April twenty is for the state beaches, yes. I'm gonna ask one of you right now.
Yeah, that's okay, I can get back to them tomorrow.
Thank you, good night, yeah.
Okay, thank you. She's come off this weekend, she said she wanted to go there, thank you, thank you. Two good stuff.